Good evening, I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order with the clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Circey?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Dibala?
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Hansak?
Present.
Councilmember Weslech?
Here.
Great, well, thank you all so much for coming to the meeting this evening. There, I'm gonna run through the agenda quickly, there has been a little bit of an adjustment. So, we will start the evening with two, for the records, the first is introduction of the Montgomery College Scholarship recipients. Some of them are here with us today. The city of Tacoma Park offers a scholarship program through Montgomery College. We also have the Arbor Day proclamation. And then, in addition, we will have an opportunity to recognize the passing of Jackie Frazier, the director of, the executive director of the Lunch and Learn program, and person who has done so much for this community. We will then have the public hearing, the public hearing on the FY26 budget, followed by council comments, city manager comments, and then the work session. So, we have the budget work session, where we'll talk about budget reconciliation, and that is for the sidewalk and traffic calming project recommendations. And then, we will have a second budget work session on budget reconciliation. And then, we will have another work session on the establishment of a council compensation task force. In terms of upcoming items, on Sunday, April the 20th is Easter Sunday, for those who recognize Easter. On Monday, April the 21st is tentatively scheduled, a city council budget work session starting at 7:30. On Wednesday, April the 23rd, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have a proclamation for the proclamation of National Infertility Awareness Week, which is April the 20th through the 26th of 2025. We will have a presentation from Piney Branch Elementary School in terms of the feasibility study for renovations of the school. And then, we will also have our final budget reconciliation work session. On Wednesday, April the 30th, the council will meet at its normal time of 7:30. We have a presentation, consultant presentation, introducing the performance measurement design project. We will also have a work session regarding procurement of the HVAC control system and Ward 6 traffic study. And then, we will have voting sessions, first reading ordinance accounting for the receipt of the expenditure of grant funds, Maryland Computer Lab Program Grants, and Maryland State Arts Council Public Conservation Grant, and the resolution adopting the 2025-2026 city council priorities. On Wednesday, May the 7th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will start with a presentation, a quarterly financial report, the FY25 third quarter, followed by voting sessions, so a resolution identifying the FY26 traffic calming and sidewalk projects, first reading ordinance adopting the FY26 tax rates, first reading ordinance adopting the FY26 storm water management budget, first reading ordinance adopting the FY26 budget, and the second reading ordinance accounting for the receipt of expenditure of grant funds, Maryland Computer Lab Program Grant, and Maryland State Arts Council Public Art Conservation Grant. And then, we will have a consent agenda that we will vote on, and that is for the single reading ordinance awarding a contract for an HVAC control system, and single reading ordinance awarding a contract for the Ward 6 traffic study. On Sunday, May the 11th is Mother's Day, and on Wednesday, May the 14th, the council will be meeting at its regular time of 7:30, and we will finish out our voting on the budget. Second reading ordinance adopting the FY26 tax rates, second reading ordinance adopting the FY26 storm water management budget, and the second reading ordinance adopting the FY26 budget. And just as, I'm actually gonna go a little further, Wednesday, May the 21st, the council will meet at 7:30, and we have a number of tentative presentations slated. One is the final presentation on the performance measurement design project. The Maple Avenue Project presentation on rent stabilization in the DC, Maryland, Virginia region, and rent stabilization, and a work session on the rent stabilization policy review scope of work. And so, with that, we are going to move to our first item on the agenda this evening, which is an introduction of the Montgomery College Scholarship recipients. As I mentioned, we have had the pleasure of working in partnership with the, with Montgomery College to provide $5,000 to the university to award to scholarships for students. Montgomery College, who as part of the ACES program, that have a connection to the city of Tacoma Park. So, it is lovely, 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 lovely to have an opportunity to recognize the students that are here today and recipients of the scholarship. And so, we have some certificates for those students, and I'm just gonna ask for you to come up to the stage, once I've called all of the names, and we can take a photo and provide you all with an opportunity to shake our hands, because it is such an honor to have an opportunity to meet each and every one of you. So, our first scholarship recipient is Valinda Joanna Amaya Valdez, who is majoring in criminal justice and is a recipient of the scholarship for the second year in a row. Come on up. If their parents are anything like mine, if we did not get photos, that would be my head. The next scholarship recipient is Cristobal Sorwa Okaming, who is majoring in preclinical nursing, and will be attending online, so I just want to, online, I'm sorry. I just wanna make sure. Wonderful!
Thank you.
Congratulations, Cristobal, and we will make sure that you receive your certificate as well.
Thank you.
The next person is Robelle Karip Burn, Burn who knew? I butchered that. And you're, you're in my ward! And we have two other students that are, that were unable to join us today. Grace Nande is majoring in hospitality, food and beverage management, and is a recipient of the scholarship for the second year in a row. And Ishan Bahari, Baharti, is majoring in information systems. So, let's celebrate these students for doing such wonderful work in their academic careers, and we definitely wish you all the best. And so, with that, I'm gonna ask my colleagues on council, the students that are here, for us all just come up front and take, and the director of the program, so please come up. And if there are any parents. You can come up too.
Something to be happy.
Wonderful. Okay, wonderful, well, again, congratulations to all of the scholarship recipients, and of course, such a pleasure to see Brad Stewart, and to have staff that are, that are so committed to the future success of Tacoma Park residents. So, with that, we're going to move to our Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas trees are an important part of the character of Tacoma Park and provide many benefits to residents, and whereas trees provide air quality, reduce storm water runoff, provide shade, lower summer temperatures, and reduce energy use in buildings, remove air pollution by absorbing emissions, and contribute to climate change, provide wildlife habitat, and contribute to the beauty of our neighborhoods. And whereas the city plays a vital role in promoting and encouraging the protection and planting of trees. And whereas the city of Tacoma Park is observing Arbor Day with the celebratory gathering and tree walk on April the 26th. Now therefore I, Talisha Circey, Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, do hereby proclaim support for Arbor Day and the urban forests in Tacoma Park, and encourage residents to plant trees and help preserve the tree canopy. And so, next, I am going to turn things over to council member Hansak, who will be reading a tribute to Jacqueline Jackie Frazier in, in recognition of her passing.
Thank you, Mayor. Do I have my on the mic? Okay. First, I wanted to say welcome to everyone who joined us tonight to recognize Jackie. Jackie Frazier, Jaquette Frazier, who was also known as Jackie to most of us. A longtime community leader and a recipient of the Tacoma Foundation's Lifetime Achievement Award, passed away on April 12th, 2025, this past weekend. A Tacoma Park resident since 1985, she was for many years the lead organizer of the local Martin Luther King Junior Day events, and executive director of Tacoma Park's Lunch and Learn. You can see many of their shirts out here in our audience tonight. In 2013, after retiring from a federal career at the Pentagon, National Institutes of Health, the Department of Agriculture, and other agencies, Jackie launched Lunch and Learn as a no-fee, full-day summer camp that has served hundreds of children since then. Previously, Jackie had trained District of Columbia teachers in how to engage students of color in the academic disciplines of science, math, and technology. As a tenant at the Essex House Apartments, she volunteered for many years in a leadership role at the building, oversaw a food pantry, managed an after-school program, and continued to be the go-to person for neighbors in need. Jackie was also a volunteer with the Village of Tacoma Park, often driving elderly residents to doctor's appointments, even as her own health was in decline. In recent years, Jackie received an Azalea Award for activism in Tacoma Park, and the Neil Potter Award for advancing the community good in Montgomery County. When Lunch and Learn students were asked what they wanted to do in their lives, many would say, "I want to be like Ms. Jackie." And if you'll indulge me, I also wanted to share a personal note. I had the pleasure of meeting, and pardon me if I break down. I had the pleasure of meeting Jackie Frazier just two and a half years ago, but in that short time, she became one of the most influential people in my life. Jackie had a gift. She believed deeply in the power and importance of civil society. And I know that if she looked out today to see all of your beautiful faces, that she would be so proud to see you sitting here in this room with us. Welcome, Ashley. And, and her friends from Lunch and Learn. Did you know that for many, many years, she and I think Doris Duarte and maybe Sherwanda, I'm not sure who else did this, but I heard that they faithfully attended our city council meetings, first in person and then online throughout COVID. And I hope many of you know how long these meetings last. That kind of dedication only comes from someone who really believes that local governance matters. She also made it a priority to pass that belief on to our young people. Every year during Lunch and Learn, she made sure that a local elected official came to meet the youth to talk with them about civic engagement, engagement, and why it matters. And when I was running for office, that was her first question for me, was, was I going to show up? She wanted the next generation to understand their power and their responsibility. Jackie also believed that every child should know the joy and the life-saving skill of swimming. You know, she grew up in California, as she and I talked about many times, and she loved to swim. And she and I bonded over that. Her pool was the Piney Branch Pool. And it brought her so much pride and purpose to be able to teach each one of you how to swim, you young people. Is that right? She never revealed that to me. Shh, she doesn't hear us. Most of all, Jackie believed in me. And I've tried and will keep trying to live up to that trust. She understood how hard this world can be to navigate, but she was always there over my shoulder reminding me what I gave today was enough. I bet she said those things to you as well. Take a break, be with your family, but keep on giving because service matters, and so does grace. Jackie was a giver through and through, and our community is better because she was part of it. And I am definitely better for having known her. And just for a minute, if anybody would like to stand and just, just that we recognize that you lived with Jackie or worked with Jackie in solidarity with Ashley, so she can, Ashley can see who all of you are. Could we take a moment and just stand up? And Ashley, you can turn around. Ashley is Jack, Ms. Jackie's daughter. We love you, Ashley. Thank you for the gift of your mother.
Ashley, your mom created one of the strongest villages. The strongest village. So even during this time, I don't want you to ever feel like you are alone. Because this village, the same way Ms. Jackie was here for me and all of the people here, we will be here for you. So I want to, I want to encourage every single person here who is dealing with the loss to remember that we're not alone, that we have this village, that Jackie toiled day and night, night and day, even when she was in the hospital. And I'm begging her to take care of herself. She's like, Mayor, we gotta make sure that the kids have lunch. You know? And so I just want to make sure that you know that we are here for you. Please, please, please reach out because we are here to support you during this time. I'm sorry, y'all. Just want to kind of pause a moment as we just have a moment of silence in honor of Ms., as I lovingly called her, Ms. Jackie. Thank you all so much. And we will be sharing more information about the service arrangements as they become available. And so again, I want to thank you all for, for coming here tonight. Because a whole in our community is, is, there's a whole. But I know that Jackie has put so much in each and every one of us. From her students, to the teachers who work with Lunch and Learn, to all of the volunteers that help her in Essex House. And now it's up to us to make sure that we are continuing to move forward her legacy. Thank you all so much. It kind of feels bad to move into the budget public hearing, huh?
But it's what Jackie would want.
But it's what Jackie would want.
It's what Jackie would want.
Jackie was, she and Doris would be texting me during council meetings because they're watching the meetings. Howard is calling. Okay, all right, well. Again, thank you all so much. And please, again, we will make sure to share information about the service as it becomes available. And, and I plan to be there, and I hope all of us that are here today in honor of Ms. Jackie will, will be available for her home-going service.
Can I also say, I hope that, I hope that in Ms. Jackie's honor, we will have the pleasure of seeing your beautiful faces in this room sometime this year. Speak up about something that you know Ms. Jackie would care about. She was always calling me and saying, hey, Kara, what is it going to take if I can get people to come, come with me to council? So, you know, we love seeing you.
Yep.
And she would love to see you.
Yes. Thank you so much. We're just, we're just going to take a quick, is it okay with folks? Can we take a, a quick five, 10 minutes?
Yep.
I guess I gotta bang the.
Okay, thank you all so much. As we are reconvening tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council, as we just took a little time in honor of, in recognition of the passing of Jackie Fraser, and all of the wonderful works that she has done in the community. So now, we're going to move to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing on the 2026 budget. We do not have a sign up sheet this evening, people, so feel free to come on down.
First of all, I want to extend my condolences to the family. I met Ms. Jackie, but I didn't really know her. I do want to say, these are not what the remarks I prepared to make.
Introduce yourself.
But I think it's important that things like the event tonight, it's important to do that because it reminds us that we live in this, the village, as you said. We're all human beings. So when we disagree about this, that, and the other thing, we still live in the same village and we're all still human beings. So, I'm not even going to open my pack. I'm going to make two quick points. On the public, first of all, I think that there was a plausible case made for doing something at Public Works and doing something for the police dispatchers. Regarding Public Works, I didn't see anything in the budget, and I always say, correct me if I'm wrong, but is there any money that's going to be spent now? Or more properly, I suppose, this budget year for Public Works? Because the design study is not going to be done anytime soon. And the real concern about the design study is that it's going to say, and here's an X million dollar project. And then, we're going to hear from you, I think. Well, the design study says, blah, blah. So we are committed now to come up with that money. That's backwards. Complicating or compounding is that there was a 2009 study. Why, what's new? What has to be done? Did you even tell the District 20 delegation that there was an existing study? I mean, they spent political capital to get that bond for you. So maybe there's a good answer, but I haven't heard it yet, right? So why are we, you know, give the money back if you have to. The other point is this. It's a suggestion. My colleagues will tell you, I keep saying, don't make suggestions, just put out values and ask questions. I'm going to violate my own rule. The dispatchers, look into the atrium. There are two sets of pillars. You can buck out the dispatch office to the first set or the second set of pillars. You can put a non-weight-bearing wall that sounds secure. And you can put a non-weight-bearing ceiling that is sound secure. And then, the dispatchers will have a better place to work and it won't cost $1.3 million. So, I had more to say. I'm really glad that something else happened tonight because it speaks to our common humanity. And that's more important than all the rest of the stuff we're talking about. And it's really hard to come down here and talk about the budget when you see the contract come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackie Leardo.
Didn't give my name. Tom Jackie Leardo. I think some of you knew that.
Thank you so much.
Hi, council members. Randy Gibson, Ward 3. New council members, the budget, I feel your pain. I was there. The time that you've had to understand our city programs and the budget is painfully short. I thank you all for your hard work and diligence and careful listening. I especially want to thank those of you who have raised tough questions and are seeking alternative, more fiscally prudent approaches. This kind of advocacy is always helpful, but becomes necessary in difficult times and when success is hard to measure. Unfortunately, the city's performance metrics are still in planning and independent analysis is largely absent. And I don't need to tell you that these are uncertain and volatile times at the federal, state, and local level. The worry and pain are palpable. To be prepared, I submit that austerity and prioritization should guide our budget. Success would include a clarity of objectives, a focus on efficiency, and hard-nosed choices based on meeting our more urgent, our most urgent needs and protecting our most vulnerable. Ultimately, success is building a more sustainable, long-term relationship with the residents and our environment. I regret that while the city manager's proposed budget keeps our property tax rate flat, our taxes are raised. This is not austerity, nor a very high bar for success, for budgetary success. I believe that time is now to prepare for volatile times and change the trend line in our unsustainably high property taxes. I have four quick suggestions. One, ask staff for specific project alternatives at various funding levels. I believe the staff know where to find efficiencies and creative alternatives that are least disruptive to employees and services. Two, as you reach out to our residents, in addition to asking what services that they want or they like most or they like least, also ask what their pain threshold is with regard to property taxes. Three, avoid the false narrative that those who have not provided input are pleased with the status quo. Where is the evidence for this? Most residents are too busy to making a living and taking care of their family to pay attention to our budget process, so we have to look elsewhere for guidance. Honor the views and constructive criticism of hundreds of engaged residents represented in the citywide budget survey, in budget testimony, at ward meetings, and in council correspondence. This input is your most valuable indicator of the pulse of our community. Really thank you for your diligent, hard work, efforts to listen, ask tough questions, and find creative and sustainable ways to balance the budget. Your success would be ours. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to warn the other former council members to not go over time.
I can wait for him to be chastised.
At your pleasure. Good evening, Paul Hubner, Ward 3. The chaos and uncertainty that Trump administration are already affecting our neighbors. DOGE has destroyed the financial health of many in our community with the layoffs at AID and other federal agencies. The risks of inflation, recession, and increasing unemployment are spreading as we speak. Just yesterday, 20,000 IRS employees were fired. Social Security offices are being closed and benefits are being targeted. Now is the time to both cut the property tax rate and to eliminate or downsize projects that cost more than we would have in revenue to allow. Capital projects like those being planned for the atrium and Public Works need to be scaled back. Expenditures and proposed expenditures should be carefully scrutinized and tracked. In FY 2019, in the FY 2019 budget, $427,000 was approved for the police atrium. Of the $121,000 spent, $85,316 was for architectural drawings. What was the other $35,000 spent on? What happened to the remaining $305,865? Another problem. You need a budget that recognizes that construction costs will skyrocket. Many basic products are sourced from Canada. Canada is the major source for U.S. lumber. Steel and aluminum from Canada, think metal studs, will have an additional 25% tariff. Canadian copper, the second source for U.S. wiring, will suffer similar 25% tariffs. Gypsum, the basic element in drywall, is also sourced from Canadian mines. The 10% contingency in the current proposed city budget is already insufficient. Larry Fink, CEO of BlackRock, has predicted a 26% increase in housing costs. Brian Moynihan of Bank of America and Jamie Dimon of Merrill Lynch both pegged the possibility of recession at or near 60%. The illegal kidnapping and overseas imprisonment of immigrants will also impact construction industry. Every construction job is near fully staffed by recent immigrants, many in reasonable fear of illegal detainment or imprisonment. All job costs will necessarily escalate from the fear of this endangered workforce. Add all these factors up. 20% to 25% tariffs from a major supplier of construction materials. Increased unemployment affecting many local residents. 60% chance of ever-increasing inflation and the labor and material shortages as a result of the tariffs. And we are looking at serious cost overruns. Add to this the lack of federal government funding, the $3 billion Maryland State budget deficit, the $3.3 billion county budget deficit, and near certain county tax increase, and we are viewing a perfect storm. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments? Hello, Julie, how are you?
Hello, I'm Julie Bode, Ward 1. I've been out of commission for some time and my memory is independent. But I'd like to, I know, okay. Especially from seasoned staff in city management. But these questions regarding SunTrust. Is it still too complicated or somehow not worth the effort to transfer city holdings from Truist when SunTrust, as city council urged for seven years, on, well, on a few occasions in recent years, is that so hard still? What makes it hard? And that's a source of one, too. The other question is, does prior city council subsidy of Northrop Grumman, also once challenged by city councils, still exist? Can somebody answer publicly now?
Nor- North Drumman?
Northrop Grumman, yeah.
North at Grumman. That is something unfortunately, we'll have to look into.
I think the reports are out, I'm sure, Michelle. I just don't have hold of them. Haven't you seen them? Connie does. Connie was present when we first, when the first reports about, and she released them, the reports about city holdings in Northrop Grumman. Indirectly, but very much there.
Okay, so just for the city manager, this is in follow-up of a number of recommendations that either came from Sustainable Banking or outstanding from the nuclear-free recommendations. And I believe, unfortunately, Director Chung is not available this evening, so we'll have to follow up with her separately in terms of your questions, but I think we may be able to do that.
Thank you very much. How do you plan to issue it? How will you make it public?
The update on the status of those recommendations? We're supposed to be doing, I believe, a work session after the budget later in this, and I haven't scheduled it yet, but that's on our shortlist of rolling agenda items to have an update.
Is there any other way before then that it can be released?
Unfortunately, I don't know if there's an official report. Yeah, I can't confirm that right now, so we'll follow up with staff. I'm happy to email you directly and let you know what we found out. Our intent definitely is to make sure that we do an update regarding the recommendations from the Sustainable Banking Task Force.
Thank you very much.
No worries. Do we have any other public comments?
Yep. Good evening, my name is Nadine Block. I'm also Ward 3. And just as many other residents have urged the council over the years to protect rent stabilization and take other actions to prevent displacement of families who rent, I'm also here tonight to urge the council to take action now as we plan the FY 26 budget to protect vulnerable homeowners from displacement. Both renters and homeowners are at risk from increasing taxes in this volatile environment that we live in. High property taxes are stressing an increasing number of residents, as you know, older folks on fixed incomes, young families who are on fixed incomes, young families who are maxed out with high mortgages, immigrant families whose earnings have been affected by their fear of being targeted for deportation, not going to work, not doing things that they need to do, and many residents who obviously have lost their federal jobs or federally-related contractor positions, or fear losing their jobs upcoming. As we know, there's many more cuts coming which will hit Tacoma Park particularly hard. Our already too-high taxes are forcing people to make some really difficult choices to leave our community. And as people noticed today, we do have a commitment to each other, and we have a commitment to putting people over potentially legacies like constructed buildings here in Tacoma Park. We also have a particularly interesting position that was referred to by other speakers, where we are in a blue, very blue spot in a relatively blue county, in a relatively blue state next to some red and very purple places who are under extreme threat of losing autonomy or control that they do have. And our consideration of what it means to be a sanctuary city in its complete definition of a sanctuary city for people who need it because of their immigration status is a good place to start. A sanctuary city for women or folks who need gender care might be another, women who need particular medical support, or a sanctuary city even at the element of environment or healthy living positions, clean water, clean air, access to parks to play in. So we have a particular location geographically and politically where our responsibility is great in this moment, to live up to our progressive stated values. So I'm really hoping that this city council, and I know a lot of you have done a lot of the work of putting values into practice as we talk about what we do next. So I'm hoping that we do not have another tax increase this year, and holding to the tax limit is not enough, we need to lower the rate.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Do I have any other comments this evening on the budget? Come on down, former council member Schultz.
Former council member Schultz here. I was on the city council, but I'm here tonight speaking as a member of Police Chiefs Advisory Board. I've been working with the police department in that capacity for a good number of years. Under the current concerns about the police atrium project, I think I would ask you, I understand, as you're on this budget and with the political, national political situation, is that it creates a lot of fear in our community, among all of us as individuals, because we, there's so much uncertainty. Just look at the stock market, it just goes up, down, and the bond market is going even crazier. It's, many people saying today is scary. But I think we not, we should be careful not to instinctively rush and deal with our fears when we talk about the projects that lie in front of us and certain expenses that you guys having to deal with. The police atrium closure project has been in the works for a really long time. Much has been spent already to get it rolling, but as we all know, it's been delayed because of the, of the construction of the library. And so what I want to be able to encourage you is to say, yes, we knew, you naturally instinctively should be thinking of ways to save money, to put it aside for whatever worse situations may come along. But that project is not something that's going to be effectively accomplish anything in that vein. There's other things that can be done, you know, like postponing the purchase of a couple garbage trucks or something like that, or delaying a consulting contract because those are always more expensive than they need to be, or postponing construction of sidewalks and that sort of thing. And the, so those are the things, and also discourage you from thinking about not hiring and replacing much-needed staff, because that's been a problem for a long time. So I look back to the time when I was on the city council and we did the planning for the library, and we went through all kinds of iterations of that project. And yesterday, I had the occasion to drive by the library project, and I was just filled with joy, absolute, wonderful feeling of satisfaction that all the work that my city council did back in the teens has really finally come to fruition. I'm so proud of the city and the work that we did. And I think when you do this police atrium project and you stick by your guns and get that project built, you're gonna have that same feeling when it gets done and you can satisfy the desperate needs of our police department staff. So I would strongly encourage you to stick by your guns, get that project built as soon as possible. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other? Come on down.
Come on down. Good evening, everyone, I'm Gail Fisher Stewart, and I too like Fred Schultz, a member of the Police Chiefs Advisory Committee, but I come before you this evening as a 40-year resident, Award 1, and I'm back again to speak on behalf of continuing with the police department, atrium projects provide a safe and welcoming space for our police department personnel and our residents. And I have in my hand a list of 69 events, programs, and drives this department conducts throughout the year. Why? Because this department is an integral part of the community. Larger departments don't have the time or the will or the effort, the inclination, to have these types of initiatives. Members of this department understand community-based policing, and because of that, you won't see probably a large number of people here speaking. Why? Because they're at home, because they're safe, they know that if they call the police, the police will come, and when the police come, they will be respected because this police department is a part of this community and is accountable to this community. But this list is a soft measure of satisfaction with the police because, for example, whenever there is a call for a drive for school supplies or candy for Halloween, Christmas toys, winter coats, and the like, the people give. And I am sure that you, like I, get requests for donations every single day, right? If the police were not valued, if they were not trusted, they would not get the response they do. People could give to other organizations. Plus, with this current presidential administration, as we heard, trust in law enforcement will be reduced if not destroyed. And we need a police department we can trust and will protect all of the people of this city. We can trust the members of this department to do what is right, and because of that, the least we can do is provide a workspace that is long overdue, an essential upgrade that is safe, where the air quality is fit for human beings, where there is adequate space to conduct meetings and interviews with the residents, and where residents feel welcome when they walk through the doors. So I encourage you to keep going with this and do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Lisa Bodut from Ward 3. I don't have anything really prepared tonight, but I do want to say, I'm one of the homeowners who pays a lot of money in taxes, like $14,000 a year for my property taxes. And it's just ridiculous, okay? It's like way more than people with comparable properties in most places across this county I would like to agree with the written comments that Emily Van Loon submitted. And I also want to say that people like Emily, people like me when, when I have more time on my hands, but we give back to the community a lot, in kind, in time, in money when we have it, but with the property taxes the way they are, I don't have extra money to give anymore, okay? I've, I'm trying to do, you know, a roof project myself with only the money from my insurance, okay? And so I'm sure that you all can do a similar kind of metric where they'll give me X amount of money for the whole project and say, you know, oh, it covers everything. I say, well, it doesn't cover everything. Let's find the most important part of the project that needs to be done and put the money there, and I will forego getting the new copper. I can do with the old copper that's on the front of my house and cover the rest of it with shingle and make it a, make it a good roof, okay? I mean, somebody said something about, you know, the atrium project could be done in, you know, a more cost-effective way without having the whole project be done, you know, that's been put forth. So anyways, there has to be some kind of creativity and discretion in terms of the funding. And also, something that came up in a recent meeting that Roger had with us, you all, city council people, should be setting a budget saying, we have X dollars to spend, and then give it back to the city manager and tell them, and then he can say how that is actually going to happen. You don't have to figure it all out.
Thank you very much. We have, come on down, Ms. Cordes.
Colleen Cordes, Ward 1. First, thank you so much for recognizing the great soul who has passed, and I'm sure she's watching over us. I'm sorry to be so blunt, but it seems important to point out an inaccurate statement by the mayor last week. Mayor Cersei emphasized, and I quote, "Unlike other communities where I'm asked regularly, are you all increasing taxes? Because it's a real thing everywhere else. They're facing that question of raising taxes. I'm able to say, no, we have a budget that has been presented that is not proposing a tax increase, and that is an anomaly right now," end of quote. But that's not accurate. Property taxes would indeed increase under the city manager's proposed budget. Tax revenues would increase about 2.6% above what the city now expects to raise in fiscal '25. Let's think about that. How could you get 2.6% more in projected tax dollars? That's about an extra $424,000 for fiscal '26 if there was no tax increase. If you and your constituents were not paying higher taxes, how could tax revenues be going up by $424,000? What else would explain that, given our stable population, if the budget did not propose a tax increase? It's true the property tax rate would remain the same, but we don't pay tax rates, we pay tax bills, and our bills are based on the rate multiplied by our assessed home values. And the total assessed value of all properties in Tacoma Park have gone up by, you guessed it, 2.6%. That explains that extra money. So if the rate stays flat but property values on average are rising, then there will be a tax increase, that is, an increase in the taxes that residents pay. The only way for the council to avoid a tax increase is to lower the rate to a constant yield rate or lower. The April City Newsletter is misleading on this point. It nowhere mentions that taxes would go up next year, although it makes much of the tax rate staying the same. In fact, there's a big chart focused on that. Big deal. You can't tell how much the taxes we all paid rose or fell over the years just by looking at those rates. They are meaningless without knowing how much the total property values rose or fell in those years. Leaving out that information that residents need is embarrassing. I urge the mayor and city manager to clarify for residents, both unions, all council members, that the proposed budget does include a tax increase. Not everyone will pay the same percent increase because the value of your home may have risen or fallen faster than your neighbor's. Some will actually pay less than last year, but there will be an average increase of 2.6%. I agree with Mayor Cersei, avoiding a tax increase is a worthy goal, but you will have to reduce the tax rate to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down, former council member Seaman.
If I say any time, I don't have to say, I'm Terry Seaman, Ward 4. And I know sometimes I talk too long and go on and on when I shouldn't, so I'll try to be brief tonight. You know, I, first of all, wanted to thank the council for the time that you've put into this budget and also for the hearings that you've held, and also the other listening that you do to the community to understand the various opinions of people. And I know it's a difficult job because I sat on that side of the table for a while. I'm happy to know that you've looked, you know, considered the various opinions about the atrium project, but I think it's important to, to understand that this is something that's gone, you know, began, the need was recognized over 10 years ago, and it's been something that has been worked on a little bit, also pushed downstream or upstream, which is because of the, the library project and other things. It was a lower priority maybe when it was first recognized, and it's become more and more of a priority since then. I think that it cannot be done piecemeal, it's something that has to be done in total, and we, I think our police officers deserve it, I think the community deserves it. I think there's serious problems that have been identified that justify the expense now, and I encourage you to go forward with the atrium project as designed or as planned. I've also been terribly disappointed to recently hear that there are ideas with changing some of the pay scales that have been worked out and negotiated with the union and with other employees, to hear that that's being, that some people are saying, well, we should cut that back. Again, I think that it's, it's a late date to be doing that and changing things, and the real concern to me is that if you, again, do it piecemeal and it, it changes pay scales that make things inequitable across the board, and I don't think that's fair to the people. The Public Works project is another one that's been longstanding need. I know that, you know, there was a neat video a couple weeks ago that the Public Works employees had done to illustrate some of the problems that have gone on, but it's a, for some reason, I think, Public Works seems to always be on the short end of getting things when they need them. We did do some renovations of the, of the department down there several years ago, which improved things, but again, it's, it's, you know, the construction they're talking about now and doing the planning for is an area that is a real burden on the employees and something that needs to be considered. I think that, lastly, that, well, I want to thank all of you for the work you're doing on trying to come up with a good budget this year. I don't see my timer.
Because you're over.
Yeah, I can't. I cannot believe.
I have to text Fred to let him know that of all of the council members, he was the briefest.
All right, well, I always say, thank you for your work, and I think the city manager knew what the target was, how much we were hoping. how much we were hoping to spend before this all started, which was to keep a constant tax rate, not a constant tax income. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments on the budget? I am so sorry, but we, we have got to move forward. And you've already had your opportunity. But I'm gonna give you another chance because we're gonna have additional comments. Just give me one second. Let me just make sure we close out the public hearing on the budget. Then we will move to general public comments. And then I'll have you back up. How does that sound? Excellent. So thank you so much. Do we have any? No virtual. Now, Ms. Julie, I am so sorry because now we're getting ready to move to general public comments because I thought I had someone online waiting to testify on the budget. I don't. So you are free to come up.
I, I wanted to, I wanted to emphasize that the question is for city management because the council, when they made their decisions, passed it on to city management many years ago, and it seemed to die there. It didn't, I mean, nothing happened since then. And brief conversations with Suzanne Lebsak showed she didn't think much of it anyway. But given all that, if it's true, if, if nothing really has happened to change the banking policies in the way the city, in the council had asked for and to change the investment with North Huron Common, does it, does, does the manager consider Tacoma Park to be a nuclear-free city? And if so, on what grounds? Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments this evening? Do we have any virtual general public comments?
No.
Knowing that you're going to do budget reconciliation, Colleen Cordis, Ward 1. I just want to respond to this idea that the council directed the city manager to plan for a constant rate. I know December 11th, there was a vote. It was a brand-new council, four people entirely new, never gone through the budget process before. Very quickly, there was a vote, and that was put in there. And, and there was some discussion. I think at least one council member said, well, gee, could we maybe get a few different cuts? Could he show us what it would be if, you know, if it was constant rate or, I mean, constant yield? Something like that. It didn't impress me as something like this. Brand-new council was absolutely certain they wanted to hold that rate all through the budget cycle. They needed to give, they were in a rush to give direction to the city manager to get going. And obviously, there's all kinds of time, I think, that the new council members were assuming, and, and I think hopefully the whole council, that you could deliberate about what that rate should be, not to, not to even mention the fact how different the world looks now than it looked in December. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, I do just want to, on that point, clarify because I want to make sure that, that folks understand what transpired. The council voted on a, a budget priorities resolution in which it was not limited just to the tax rate, but it also included additional guidance that we requested in terms of doing analysis and coming back to the council around different things, such as the utility tax rates, things of that nature. We've since had a series of work sessions since that resolution passed that included all of the additional information that council requested that the city staff present to us to enable us to make decisions regarding the budget as well as the tax rate. Just to be clear, although we asked the city management staff to present a budget to us that is, that does not include a tax increase to start, it is up to the members of council to ultimately determine what the tax rate will be. So I, I want to make that clear that during the budget priorities discussion, we are not talking about what the final tax rates will be, but instead, we are asking what we would like to see the city staff present to us in order to enable us to make the decisions regarding the budget and regarding the final tax rate. As was mentioned at the start of this meeting, we will have a number of votes regarding the tax rate in addition to the multiple meetings on reconciliation that will be used to help to identify the path forward in terms of the tax rate. So with that.
Sorry. Tom Gagliardo, Ward 1. More importantly, I live in the city of Tacoma Park, and all of you represent me and my colleagues. The discussion has been had before that there's always an emphasis on revenue. And it's certainly important to know what your sources of revenue are and how much will be generated. But the budget, and it's right in the introduction, points out that more money is being proposed to be spent than will be realized in revenue. And we have to start thinking, and it's not the first time I've said this to the group, to the four new members, the three incumbents know that I've said this many, many times. What are you spending the money on? Is it wise? Is it prudent? Is it the best expenditure? Is there an alternative? And that's the discussion that too often gets short shrift. It's not an accusation of motive. I've said that before. Okay? And as to the police department, I think it's a great police department. This isn't about whether they're good cops. This isn't whether they serve the community. This is whether you can just keep giving them money every time they ask for it. And I just echo the, the statements of the prior speakers. This is a very different world tonight than it was even in, on December 11th and certainly when the atrium project was first discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And just confirming, we don't have anyone that has joined? Okay. Now, we're gonna move to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Councilmember Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for all the comments. Tough to take in some of the thoughts, all of the information that I've had to consume over the past couple of months and digest it. Had some tough conversations with some residents who are tax burdened. And I, too, live in apartments that at some point I'll probably be priced out of myself. So I get it. I get the, the struggles. I want to thank the members of my Sherman Avenue crew. I joined the listserv for the first time the other day. And we had some discussions about the sidewalks, the project that's, that's on the list for Ward 4. And very good dialogue. Everyone was civil, and I appreciated it so much just as I've appreciated the comments and how everybody's respectful of each other here. So while I'm, I've heard the comments and I've heard the, the suggestions that certain projects should not be done. Sidewalks, atrium project. And I certainly have heard the reasons why. And having been a member of that police department and served here for 27 years, I sit on that, I've sat on that side as well. And I said it last time, last week, I believe, that I've sat down in that, in the basement with the bad air quality. And I understand the impacts that it has. I understand the impact that it had on me, on my former colleagues. And it's something to seriously take into consideration. I don't think it's a matter of just pouring money into a police department. I think these things, as the dispatcher said last week, have an, an impact on them personally. And I think I spoke as well about our children. And when you talk about the two projects that I've had dialogue with the community on the past few weeks, the atrium project and the sidewalks, the one thing that comes to mind are our children. And while I respect the varying opinions, when you start talking about children and public safety and the, the kids that are upstairs in our, in our aftercare program that have to hear and see some of the things that go down in the police department, I want everybody to really keep that in their thoughts. And hopefully, we make good decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you. I, can you hear me? I also would like to really thank everybody who takes the time to come out and, and give really, really thoughtful comments. I, it, it always gives me a lot to think about. And I take that together with the conversations, many of which I have outside of this room, as many of you have seen. There aren't a lot of Ward 5 residents that I see. See Karen Elrich there. Thank you for being here. I, I just want to say that, and I know I said this last week, but maybe there are a few new faces. And then I'll say something else is that I, I truly do feel strongly that I am, I am pleased that our city manager took what we, what we asked for. I feel that that is what we asked for. This is the type of draft we asked for. And I was really delighted with what was presented to us in terms of really planning for a gradual, gradual, a more gradual seeking of balance in our budget, which I think is, is a much smarter way than we're seeing. For example, our federal government, which is not at all gradual, even if we need to get to that point, it's not a good idea to be abrupt, no matter what. I think we can all kind of agree on that. You know, maybe we don't agree on, on this here and the pace. But I like what I saw, and I like where we're getting back into balance. And I, and I think that this is the right direction of travel. I think, I feel it's the right pace. And now it's more about the, the, the nitty-gritty details, you know, looking at some of these, these things that we're gonna be talking about in this budget reconciliation process. And I welcome that dialogue with my colleagues here and off the dais. And I, I just wanted to share quickly. I did a quick analysis because I received a number of emails, most of whom, interestingly, weren't from my own ward residents. And I was curious. You know, how much are we paying in Tacoma Park taxes? I thought some of you might enjoy, as I did. I love my numbers. So here's a quick, just summary of what I found. I compared a house that somebody paid $77,000 for in the late 1980s, that was 10,000 square foot lot, same size as my own lot, a fairly large lot, I will say, 1,700 square foot home. That's about 600 square feet larger than my own home, which I'm going to tell you about as well. And that house is paying $3,821 a year in taxes. And then I'm gonna tell you about my own house on Kennebec. 10,000 square foot lot, only 11,800 square feet. Most people would say that's not very big for a single-family house. And I am paying $2,778 per year in Tacoma Park taxes. I'm gonna compare these for you in just a second. Here's another one. Third, third house. 17,000 square foot lot. It's over in Ward 1. It's a very big, that's one of our largest lots in the city. Okay? It's almost a double lot. $14,357 in tax. Sounds like a lot, right? It's a big house. It's a big lot. The house is 2,290 square feet. I'm not just throwing out these numbers for nothing. Now here, listen to the comparison. Each of these houses is paying between $200 and $380 per month in Tacoma Park city taxes. Each of these houses, the two, my house, who pays the least taxes of these three, and the 17,000 square foot house are paying 27 cents per square foot of their lot. We're paying exactly the same per square foot in land. And they bought their house in the early 1990s. I bought mine in the 2000s. However, the house in Ward 3 that was paid $77,000 for is paying 38 cents per square foot of lot, so 10 cents more. It might possibly explain why some people who bought in that era or perhaps their, their, their assessed rate on their property seems higher relatively. It is. It's 10 cents higher per square foot of, of lot. On the other hand, the house in Ward 3 and my own house are only paying $2.25 per square foot of house. And the big, big house on the big, big lot that was bought 40 years ago is only paying $2 per square foot of house. So what I am trying to say to you is there are a lot of value propositions here. And I want to put out that one of the things that I'm mulling over, because I was interested in looking at these and what this says to me. One of the things that this says to me is this seems, mm, about right to me. And am I willing? Am I willing to pay $231 per month for the services that I feel I'm getting from Tacoma Park? I am willing, and I'm not making much money, to pay $230 per month to have excellent, affordable housing and diversity here in my neighborhood and excellent recreational services that I share with my neighbors. I'm also willing to pay for a guardian police service that is so different than the rest of this country. It doesn't seem like a lot. What does seem like a lot, however, is the almost double amount of county taxes that I'm paying. And I know that people get tired of hearing that number. But it does really, if you take a look at these numbers, and I am happy to share this without the addresses, it's really quite interesting. And I would ask people to, to ask yourself, what am I, what is my value proposition? What am I getting for my $200 to $300 per month? Am I willing to pay for that? And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. I, I do know that Councilmember Wassalek has comments.
Hi. Can you all hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Apologies for not being there in person. I am out of town celebrating spring break with my families. So to any other families that are enjoying this break from school, I hope you're having a good time. Just quickly, I want to thank everyone who's made comments tonight in public, all the folks that have sent in emails. I, I think I'm pretty close to knowing about where I stand on some of these budget items, but I still would welcome feedback from Ward 6 residents. So please, if you're in my ward and you have any thoughts, please reach out to me in the next, in the coming days, a week or so, so I can make sure to know where, where you might stand so that I can best represent my part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wassalek. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you to everybody who came to speak with us this evening and especially to the many Ward 1 residents who spoke and to the many, many more who have written me about their views and concerns about the budget. I would like to speak especially to one point that was made by, by one of my constituents, Colleen Cordis, about the way in which the process has unfolded and a concern that I, as a new council member, have been experiencing, which is that we did come in on day, what, it was one or maybe it was day seven or eight of our, of our role here and, and were asked to vote on a budget framework, so to speak. And we still have not voted on our council priorities. And this, to my mind, represents one of the challenges that we're facing as we try and reach closure and agreement in this reconciliation process because we still, obviously, have not finished our conversations about the precise priorities that this council has. We forced our city manager to prepare a budget document for this year that used the outdated priorities of the previous council as his lodestar. He had no choice. We hadn't finished the process. To me, this was a backwards process. And I understand it was driven by the time constraints, but there's something wrong with that process because it leaves until the very end, as we are reconciling this budget, the moment when we had come to closure about our own priorities. And I don't have a solution to that problem other than that I feel that we want to do it differently next time because I still, you can hear the tension we have over resolving these challenges because we haven't had a chance to come to an understanding and vote on that before giving direction to the city manager. And that is not on him. It's on us. I think we need to figure that out and do it better. I would feel better about it if we could. And we have to look at the budget, but we also have to think about the world that we're living in. And so I'm gonna end on the note of urging people to do that by attending the Planetarium on Saturday night to see the dark star night revealed to us, dark, dark sky night revealed to us. Thank you to the College of Montgomery College facility for offering us that opportunity. 7 o'clock at the Planetarium. Happy Earth Month and trying to keep, keep it mellow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Do we have any other councilmembers? Do we have any other Councilmembers, Schlegel?
Yes, Mayo? I want to thank everyone who commented, especially residents from Ward three. And I'm going to speak to you as my colleagues. I'd estimate I've received emails from well over a hundred residents, in addition to twenty five or so who came to a Ward three conversation. Overwhelmingly, I'm hearing that same message that you've been hearing on, from the podium that residents shared in the fall, the manager's budget forum, which is please, please exercise strong oversight and great fiscal restraint this year. Older residents on fixed incomes, younger residents who've lost federal jobs. A lot of people are feeling squeezed and forced to move even. So they're feeling that the property tax rate following along with the home assessments is not sustainable for them. So many are asking for delays in vehicle purchases, raises in hiring, reductions in use of consultants, and reasonably scaling back new capital projects is what I'm almost universally hearing from people. There's strong agreement across all the people I'm hearing from, city workers shouldn't be hurt by budget decisions. They want to see more emergency aid made available. But in terms of the property tax rate, many residents are really clear in saying they want to see a constant yield property tax rate. We're not that far off from it. I feel colleagues like these residents' pleas are urgent. And I'm not inclined to dismiss the impact that a small reduction in the rate would have on their budgets or on their feeling of trust in, in our government. So just five reasons for strong fiscal prudence in this reconciliation process. One, as Councilmember Landman just said, that we voted on budget priorities in December. That, the flat property tax rate was in a whereas from the manager. It was not a priority that we expressed. Four of us are brand new to the council, just getting our footing. Radical new developments at the federal, state, and county level since December, like we might have made that resolution five or 10 years ago. It's so different from the ground we're standing on right now. Many, many local households are hurting in ways that were not perceived four months ago. The new property assessments that came at the end of December, they have locked in growth in our property tax base for the next three years, regardless of the rate we set this year. We are going to see that base continue to grow. And as a council, as Councilmember Landman said, we've not yet agreed upon our priorities for this two-year term. So we should be really careful about appropriating for spending in areas where we don't yet have consensus or clarity together as a group of seven. So I feel that, I, I will make this, I'm imploring you, please, see, how, how can Tacoma Park continue being a true community? And I think that's shown in a place's capacity for listening and for showing people that they're heard. A true community is not a collection of properties where people rent until they can't anymore, or purchase until they're forced to cash out. A true community, for me, it's a place where people can live out their lives. So I really thank you for listening, and I look forward to our discussion this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Dibala?
Thank you. I was going to pass because I'm, I'm still thinking about earlier this evening and the, the joy of celebrating the students and the bittersweetness of celebrating the loss of a, of a dear friend. But since several people have, have already shared their thoughts, I probably should to give it a whirl here. And of course, thank you for coming out and sharing your views. And it's important to hear all the different views. It really is important to me to hear, not just my next door neighbors who happen to agree with some of you, but to, to hear the range of things that, that's on people's minds and be able to consider them all. I hear what many people are saying. I'm, I'm also aging in place. I appreciate what it means to be a homeowner who's lived here a long time and has seen change. Some that I like, some of it I don't. And I also recognize that we want to balance that with the other half of our community of its renters, with our local businesses who are going to get walloped, along with our residents and our city government and our staff. It's very important to me that we remember that our staff has needs too. I thought that we started in a great place, and I want to thank the staff for, for that. I agree with Councilmember Landman that the budget schedule probably needs some tweaks. But I, I, I recognize this is the first year that we listened to what residents said and started the budget process early, which meant starting it right in the middle of the, you know, the election change. So we got to work on that. As for our priorities, I, I was pleased that it only seemed to me that there were two places in the entire, what is it, eight or 10 pages, that we had actual disagreement. So the fact that we haven't passed it doesn't trouble me personally a whole lot. Because I know what those two places are, and they are reflected in the discussions that we're having. I'm going over time, I'm sorry. What I wanted to say, though, is I think we might need all of the extra reserves. And I think I want to focus on those of us who are most likely to need the help and ensure that our city is prepared for whatever comes along. And so as, as some of you remember, last week I proposed to increase property tax relief for lower income owners. I supported putting more money aside for, for safety net assistance should people need it. But I, I'm not sure it's wise to reduce one of our main sources of revenue at this moment. So we've talked a lot about balance, and I think maybe my balance point is just a little different from some of my fellow councilmembers. And I look forward to the discussion that we're going to have about, about some of these items. But that, that's kind of, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Been one long meeting, huh? What time is it? You haven't even really started. You know, I know all too well the challenges that folks are facing. I know, as has been mentioned, we have a number of residents that are aging in place and have a fixed income, right? And so the impacts of inflation are actually, it's impacting your bottom line. I'm a federal worker. You don't know one day from the next whether or not you're going to have a job. That uncertainty is impacting your bottom line. Your retirement is going up and down like a yo-yo right now. And you don't know how that's going to impact your bottom line. We have, as a city, a number of factors that we also don't know how they're going to impact our bottom line. And so for me, as I've started this whole process, trying to figure out the balance, I feel very strongly because, you know, I deal with a lot of the calls of residents who come to us when they are at the straits of, I may lose my home, I can't pay my mortgage, I can't pay my rent. I don't want to be in a place in this time where we know so many people are going to see us as part of their village to have to tell them no, because we have not saved enough money through our revenue, and have the revenues available to help them. So, so for me, I am trying to balance uncertainty. Uncertainty for our residents, uncertainty for our businesses, and uncertainty for our city. And that's why I am a strong proponent of what this budget includes, which is a number of reserve set-asides for the unknown. We don't know what stipulations may come out of this administration for every single federal penny you accept. We have to ask ourselves, do we have the money in our coffers to protect ourselves, to be able to say no to money? Because we want to uphold the values that we hold dear as a community. And I want to make sure that we don't box ourselves in, in a way where we don't have the resources in the city to set, to turn down grant funds. We don't have resources in the city to help people who are in need of amounts of money that may supersede potential tax cost savings, because we don't have the monies in our coffers. And again, this, this whole process is one that is always going to be complicated. I, I recognize that we have four new council members. We had three new council, three new council members. Our terms are only two years. You will always walk into, if you're new, newly elected, you are always going to walk into a situation where you are going to be immediately slapped in the face with decision-making regarding a budget. Because that is how, that is the budget process. I, I really wish I could give everyone like a, a year ramp up before you have to deal with the budget. But that's just not how our election cycle versus the budget cycle works. I think that, and that relates to other conversations, you know, in terms of term lengths and all that good stuff. But that's not something for now. To make it a little easier for folks, because anyone who's newly elected is going to run into this issue. I think that one of the things I'm hoping we will hear tonight are the reconciliation items from council members that can help to demonstrate the values. I, I will say, I support adding more funds for our safety net programs. I support Councilmember Dibala's ad for additional funds to make sure that we can align with the county's new criteria for low income homeowners to be able to get, increase the number of households that will be able to receive the city's tax credit in addition to the county's tax credit. I am, I am a strong advocate for making sure that we're able to maintain our reserve set-asides to deal with income tax uncertainty and to deal with other aspects of grant funding that may go away for us. Every day it becomes a more real possibility of how state monies may, may draw up, or how federal monies may draw up, and what that means for the resources that we have. So I, I want to, and I appreciate every single resident that's left a com- I, I haven't completely made up my mind on, on things just yet. I kind of want to see how everything shakes out in terms of reconciliation items and kind of have a little time over the weekend, kind of noodle over proposals. But I do want each and every resident to know that I, I read every single comment, set of comments that come through. I try to respond. If I can't, I, I try really hard to respond. And if I missed you, I'm, I'm get to you by the weekend. Because as was said, your feedback gives me things to think about. And trying to think through ways in which we can address the challenges that so many different residents have. So I thank each and every one of you for your comments, your written comments, your verbal comments, coming out here today, coming out every other time to, to make sure that we understand the, the issues that you're facing. And we are working hard to figure out a way to address it. It may not be the way in which you, you would prefer. But we are trying to figure out ways to address the uncertainty that we know exists in today's climate. So with that, I'll turn things over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council and our guests tonight. From the Housing and Community Development Department. The FY26 Community Quality of Life Grant Program Application Window is now open. The city awards grants in the range of five thousand to ten thousand dollars for projects, programs, or events that improve the quality of life for city residents. This year, proposals will be considered in the following areas. Youth enrichment in the areas of the arts and/or sciences, food insecurity reduction, and workforce development. All funded projects must be completed between July first of this year and June thirtieth of 2026. To learn more about the program, please see a sample application and apply for the grant. You can visit tacoma park M D dot gov backslash grants. Applications are due on Monday, April 28th. The public comment period for the Purple Line Connection Study is currently open, but will close this Friday, April 18th. The link for comment can be found on the city's New Avenue Bike Ways page. Search New Avenue Bike Way. A link will be included tomorrow in the posted city manager's comments. We look forward to your thoughtful comments. The police department. Tomorrow, Thursday, April 17th, from seven, uh, seven to nine P M. Here in the Community Center Auditorium, the Tacoma Park Police Department will host a multi-jurisdictional public safety summit. The purpose of the summit will be to gather police chiefs and their representatives from neighboring jurisdictions to discuss and collaborate on investigating and reducing cross-jurisdictional crime. This summit offers a unique opportunity for law enforcement leaders to share insights, identify common challenges, answer residents' questions, and explore strategies for enhancing regional public safety. For those planning, for those attending in person, we have been approved for overflow parking at Tiny Branch Elementary School. From the Recreation Department, childcare registration for the 2025, 26 school year is open. Families with a 2025 scholarship could begin registering last Wednesday, April 9th. Registration for city residents started today, April 16th. Spots are expected to go fast, so please secure your space as soon as possible. And from the city manager's office, we have two shout-outs this week. The first is from the police department for Sergeant Mark Alfadell. A special shout-out to Sergeant Mark Alfadell for his exceptional service and commitment, not only to our police department, but to the community he serves so passionately. Sergeant Alfadell has gone above and beyond, time and again, representing our department with professionalism, compassion, and integrity. His work supporting charitable causes is especially noteworthy. He's been a longtime advocate for the Maryland Special Olympics, helping raise funds, participating in events, and cheering on athletes, often right there with them, presenting medals with genuine encouragement and pride. He also led the department's Cover the Cruiser campaign, which brought in widespread community support and raised significant funds for Special Olympics Maryland. That campaign was a shining example of what happens when leadership and heart come together. On top of that, Sergeant Alfadell took part in the International Law Enforcement Torch Run and the Montgomery County Torch Run, standing in solidarity with individuals with intellectual disabilities and promoting inclusivity through law enforcement. And perhaps most impressively, he represented our city in the 2024 Tour de Force 9/11 Memorial Bike Ride. A physically demanding and emotionally powerful event that raises money for families of fallen officers. Sergeant Alfadell tackled multiple days of riding with determination and grace, honoring the memory of those lost in the line of duty and raising critical funds to support their families. This is the kind of service that inspires us all. Thank you, Sergeant Alfadell, for your leadership, your heart, and your unwavering commitment to our community. We're proud to have you on our team. And this type of personal initiative and above and, and above and beyond the call of duty service can only be found in communities fortunate enough to have their own police department. And a second staff shout-out is from our Recreation Department. I'd like to extend kudos to Deputy Director Debbie Huffman for her chairmanship of the 2025 Maryland Recreation and Parks Association Conference that took place last week in Cambridge, Maryland. The annual conference has attendees from parks and recreation departments across the state of Maryland and the District of Columbia. Her leadership and organization skills led to one of the largest attended, attendance marks for that conference in recent years. Congrats to Debbie and thank you. That concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move into the budget work session. Okay, so the first item is the Budget Reconciliation Sidewalk and Traffic Calming Project Recommendations Follow-Up. So I think our staff will be coming down. I think that over the course of the week, I know that there's been a number of council members that have had a few-
that have had um, a few follow-up question, questions, and I know that the status of some of the projects that were originally on the list could benefit from just staff updating um, us on a couple of items. One of uh, the points of clarification that I would like um, for, for uh, staff to speak to is um, in terms of the traffic, um, I'm sorry, the traffic studies. And I know that there has been um, an update in terms of um, the traffic study for Hammond uh, between Anne and Lochne. And I know that there was a question raised about um, whether or not that street could be absorbed in the um, other New Hampshire Gardens uh, traffic study that is taking place. And I just wanted to see if we had an update on the status of that.
Mayor, we, we um, we've prepared just a brief introduction for council, just to recap what it is that we are asking of council to ensure that we're all on the same page. And I think those questions can be addressed as a part of the introduction.
Excellent.
Yes, um, so I think we'll, we'll back up just really quickly. A part of this is we have the tool out in front of us, and I, I wonder if it's possible to, to share the screen so that they can see the reconciliation list. But it is the list of projects there. Briefly, all of the, they're broken out by whether it's a sidewalk project, uh, a traffic calming project, or a traffic study project. And then furthermore, whether it's construction, design, or um, a study. Um, and so going through that, um, there's about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the three different funding sources that are funding these types. Um, so that includes traffic studies, which comes out of the Red Light Camera Fund, traffic calming and pedestrian safety, which comes out of the General Fund, and then new sidewalk designing construction, which comes out of our Red Light Camera Fund. And so amongst those different buckets, there's a grand total of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Currently, all the projects that are potentially fundable for the year are in the funded project section. Um, that totals about six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, and so moving it down into the unfunded section will lower that amount. Um, there was some questions about different projects. Um, so a quick reminder, Orchard Avenue between Fourth and Fifth has a speed hump that was added back in. There, uh, regarding the traffic study up of Hammond, um, we do have a traffic study planned for Ward Six that's focused on Glen Side and Wildwood um, as the two major roads in that neighborhood area. Um, we could add Hammond in as a consideration for additional cost. Um, currently, our understanding is that traffic study will cost probably around sixty thousand dollars. Um, so that is something to keep in mind. So.
So are we talking about extra cost, um, sixty thousand extra costs, or is the um, point being raised that um, the current study um, that we will hear about in the next couple, in next week, will um, be able to absorb Hammond as part of that project?
So we can have them added on as a consideration that is currently not fully in the scope of the project, but it could be added on for an additional, I, I, I know you, I can see a number like, um, we would have to ask the consultant what it would cost, but they would be looking at that neighborhood already.
I just wanted to add that, um, we put out a bid for the New Hampshire Gardens uh, Traffic Engineering Study with very specific goals and guidelines. Um, and it was to deal with the problems that have been identified for years now, mostly related to volume of traffic as well as speeds that cut through nature of the traffic. So the responses we've got back were very responsive to the criteria that we included in that. Um, Hammond Avenue came in through our um, resident request process with the new administrative regulations for a potential one-way street. That particular street doesn't have the kind of heavy volume, speeding issues, those kinds of things. There are other reasons where residents raised that as a, a potential one-way street. As with any one-way street, we suggest a traffic engineering study to know the consequences of making that change on one street to the rest of the neighborhood. That being said, we do have bids back that you'll be hearing that, um, and we have a recommended vendor. They, they answered the scope of work. If we were to add Hammond Avenue into that, we could potentially have that conversation with them. It would be in addition to and above the planned work that they already have, which identifies the intersections where they're taking counts, the origination and destination studies, all the aspects of trying to address our scope of work. Um, so it's a possibility, um, and it would make sense in an efficiency point of view to add that to that project, but it's, it's not currently in the scope of work, and we would, we would expect it to be for an additional cost, and it would add time to the total study.
And, and this point is important because staff capacity for um, the number of traffic studies, um, Director Braithwaite, I believe you said we have the capacity for two?
Yeah, so we, we, we currently anticipate the traffic study for Ward Six taking roughly six to seven months, taking us through about December of this year. Um, we would similarly anticipate any other traffic studies to take a similar amount of time. Um, we can try to stage it, release an RFP like ahead of it, but in terms of staff capacity, we can really only do one study at a time, uh, in terms of managing the consultant, going through data, reviewing outputs, and also uh, working on community engagement.
Okay, so the total for the fiscal year would be max or ideal for staff capacity to traffic studies?
Ideally, yes.
Count, including the one that is starting now, correct? Because this work would actually be taking place during the next fiscal year, even though it is paid for using FY twenty-five dollars.
Correct. We, i- if we were asked to do more, we would most likely not get to a, a third study until the following fiscal year.
Okay, so in terms of FY twenty-six, we are looking at um, for sure, one of these funded items um, i- in terms of the traffic studies being able to be taken on this year anymore stands a real possibility of not being able to be completed by the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay. And I see Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Westlick, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I have, I, I think two questions on that. Um, one, uh, for Director McNally and Director Braithwaite. Um, would, would the scope of the current traffic study, um, if it's focused on Wildwood and Glen Side, would the consideration of the school bus stops along Wildwood already be part of that scope? Or would that be beyond it?
That would be currently beyond the scope that we've laid out for the consultant.
Uh, I'm sorry for, a- and then, um, additional information, there is no doubt information that will be gathered by the current scope of work that will be informative of the concern that you raised, Councilmember Westlick, about the bus, bus stops and potential traffic calming. So we'll have traffic count numbers, we'll have, you know, origination and destination, you know, where the cut-through traffic's going, where the flow is. They will also be looking at bus stop pathways and pedestrian pathways and bike pathways. So there'll be, all that data and information will be collected and, and part of the evaluation. Um, it may be that they identify certain bus routes, school bus routes for any number of recommendations, working with the school, school system to alter uh, locations that are just not safe for stops or um, you know, better locations where there could be more margin of safety in space. Um, or they could uh, identify places that would serve, um, you know, uh, methods that might serve to make a more protected bus stop location through infrastructure, you know, adding curbs, adding bump outs, putting, putting additional safety areas in. So it could become part of that. Uh, that the data will be gathered that we can then use to um, evaluate that. It's also something that can come up in, there'll be a kickoff meeting with the traffic engineers, and we'll be encouraging your residents to bring all their, you know, list of concerns and specific ideas and recommendations. So as those are made, that the um, the uh, consultant will hear that and take that into account.
Okay, thank you. And I have, I have one other question. Um, uh, you know, looking, looking at the list, it seems like it's standard procedures that if we're going to say, talk about installing a sidewalk, there's a cost for design and then a cost for construction. And I wonder if with traffic studies like this, is it kind of common to say, hey, we need to fund the study, but then we need to fund whatever comes after that? Um, is that something that in the councils in years past have uh, kind of done in advance, like the, the knowing that there would be funding for implementing those changes?
Oh, we've in the past done three um, major traffic engineering studies, and those were in two thousand and seven. Um, at that time, the budget was developed just for the study itself, and implementation was then based on a very long public process, uh, and moved, and it came out into the next year, uh, those actual implementation plans. In this particular scope of work for New Hampshire Gardens, we've asked the uh, consultant to provide both short-term, easy, uh, less cost, low-cost options. So depending on what they are, uh, they may be able to be implemented with existing operating funds. And then also long-term or more expensive recommendations, and we would fully anticipate them to be an outcome and on our list in the following fiscal year for funding.
Can you just elaborate on the, it might be able to be funded out of existing operating funds? Is that like if?
If it's like signage and thermo, uh, the Public Works Department has within our operating budget and our right-of-way division, they make signs, we put up signs every day. We have thermo, we have, you know, stock that we use. So if it's pavement markings of a simple nature, signs, those kinds of things, we're able to do that with our existing operating budget.
Okay, um, and sorry, this will be my last one. I just want to confirm that the other uh, Ward Six recommendations on this list that were in the funded project lists, they all could in, it could go forward regardless of the traffic study, correct?
Yes, we're talking about the Wildwood and Glen Side sidewalk, both design and construction, because it's so fairly small. Um, there's Hammond Avenue, um,
It's basically a number of speed bumps.
Yeah, which was.
Oh, and the Hammond Avenue sidewalk.
And then, um, the Kennewick Speed Bumps, uh, the Maple and Merwood Speed Bump, um, Hammond and Anne Speed Bump, uh, and then, as we mentioned, the traffic study may require additional funds and could potentially be added on to the scope of work of the current study.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, Councilmember Schlegel.
Well, I, I wanted to have Steve.
So the question is, um, is, do you want to walk through your recommendations? Or are, is, are you done with your presentation?
We're, we're taking, at this point, we're, we're taking questions.
Okay. So Councilmember, um, Councilmember Schlegel actually had his, his hand. So Councilmember Schlegel.
The, this is a question about the proposed addition of Hammond Avenue between Anne and Lochne Street. Um, and uh, to a, to a traffic study. Am I, I'm understanding correctly that that's the, the request or the possibility? I wondered about how the future uh, layout of Hammond Avenue might, might intersect with some other things that, that we're looking at. For example, there is the um, New Ave Bike Way Connector uh, design work going on. Uh, there's the potential, I think there's a potential, there's talk about making the very end of Anne Street um, closed for public space. And then finally, I, I've seen various iterations of possible redevelopment for uh, the BF, the large BF Sol property. Um, and uh, when I look on the map, I see that it seems possible that under a redevelopment, the two uh, un-discontiguous sections of Hammond Avenue might be connected through that new, new development. So I'm wondering how you would, you're looking, you're looking at me like, what are you talking about? But um, I'm just wondering, how do you um, kind of like sequence those kinds of things so that you make sure that a study doesn't get superseded by some other new development changes and things like that?
I mean, the study can only look at what the current conditions are and not configurations that might be proposed under any development application that occurs after the study takes place. It's looking at traffic counts, it's looking at um, current conditions, where the roadway is going at that moment. In terms of how it works with kind of some of these other proposals, I think most of these proposals address issues that exist and the traffic study would note. So for example, speed humps, that sort of thing, perfectly aligned with kind of what we're doing. Um, I think for longer-term solutions, that's what the traffic study would be for. Um, the connection study between the New Ave Bike Ways and the Transit Center is really focused on pedestrian uh, and bicycle connections between the Transit Center and the New Avenue Bike Way that is currently in the design phase. And so that is specifically not looking at any major interventions in the right-of-way outside of those that deal with those specific connections. So larger things like close, street closures and stuff would have to be contemplated under uh, some other portion.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add particularly with um, you know, the connectivity study, it's an early visioning study. It's what you want your planning department to do, kind of envision what isn't there that could be there. So it will help inform for the next several years going forward. This is early design development. It's conceptual. It's not, not even thirty percent designs. They're just conceptual designs and options, and the idea being that we want to get public input into these visioning exercises. So you can look at, huh, what might happen on Anne Street if we blocked it off from university? I never thought about that before. So we're trying to facilitate community thought um, in these uh, options, and we were, uh, the planning office was very successfully getting grant funding to do that. So it's the early stages of this. It's, it's conceptual. It's not, we're not planning to break ground on any of that in, anytime soon, uh, because it'll first then have to go through real design development, and then it'll have to go through construction funding. So there, there, we're many, many years away from actual implementation of any of that. It's really just trying to get us thinking about the options and the possibilities so that as we do things, we can keep those, uh, keep those ideas and that visioning uh, fresh uh, as we, as we move through other, other things that we can do.
Thanks. And I do just want to um, make sure that I'm clear. Um, City Manager, has the city been made aware of any BF Sol development plans?
Not to my knowledge. I have met with the, their team in the past year, although it hasn't been in the last few months. They were pretty clear that frankly, they're pretty happy with their development. It's very lucrative. It's one of their highest-producing sites. I would be surprised if they were going to propose anything, any radical changes to the site. But of course, if council wishes, I could try and get an update. I'm certainly not aware of any plans, and, and they didn't communicate that to staff when we had a real sit-down with them on various issues.
Right, thank you very much.
I, just to, to finish out, I just, I, I hope my point was clear. It was a little convoluted, but it's just wanting to make sure that different initiatives aren't underway that could potentially come, come into conflict in terms of the conclusions they drew. I'm not opposed to adding Hammond Avenue into the study, but I, I wondered like how strange it would be if it ended up making some change to Hammond Avenue that was then rendered um, needing to be changed. if it ended up making some change to Hammond Avenue that was then rendered, um, needing to be changed again because of some change to Anne Street or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. And just to also point out, what we're talking about there is a one-block long section of the street. So it, it's not like a neighborhood network street. It's not like Wildwood Drive. It's a off-to-the-side street where one block is already one-way and the other block is two-way. So it's just taking a look at that, which it, it kind of exists in its own little universe.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and so given that, uh, we are, um, entering into reconciliation, I do want to give everybody a little bit of a heads-up in terms of how I want to handle this discussion. Um, and we have about twenty-seven minutes left. Um, so I would like for council members, um, to propose, um, the items that they would like to, keep on the list or delete from the list. Um, and if there are any council suggested items that are not reflected here that you would like for, um, uh, to add to the list, um, to please let us know. Um, this way we will have a clearer understanding of, um, the items, uh, that council members would like for us to consider in terms of the, um, specific projects as well as the overall, um, possible budget for, um, for the projects. Uh, Councilmember Landman.
I still have one question of clarification and I'm sorry, my brain has taken a while to get there and it has to do with Chestnut Avenue. Uh, so from the conversations that have been going on, uh, you know, in the lead-up to tonight, uh, I understand from you, Director Braithwaite, that the residents who reviewed the Chestnut Avenue plans were happy with, um, going forward for the most part and want to wait and let that plan, uh, let the sidewalk construction take place and then come back later for the plan, uh, for the possibility of doing a study, a traffic study to determine if a one-way just, uh, thing would be good. So I think we're, am I right in understanding that there, there was support for that postponement or potentially cancellation in future?
Uh, correct. Um, the meeting that we had, um, on April third, um, it was attended by all residents of the one block. And they unanimously said, we, we have a recommendation for which side of the street the sidewalk is, how they're going to work out the parking. They were all there sort of divvying up their spots. Um, and they further said that we'd like to live with it after construction um, to see if we think we would benefit from a one-way street. If the, you know, take-turn traffic gets too congested, if we're hearing horns honking, if we have trouble getting in and out of our driveways, we'll come back to you.
Come back to it later. So I, I'm, I'm clear on that. What I'm not clear on, looking at the list here of, uh, the, the reconciliation list is where is the sidewalk construction, uh, for Chestnut?
So, so that's already actually accounted for. So if you're looking at the top there, you'll see new sidewalk design in the red light camera fund. And you'll see in parentheticals, it's total funding is three hundred thousand, uh, but half will be spent on construction of sidewalks for Thirteenth Avenue and Chestnut. So we've already planned for that and removed that funding from this potential pool of allocation, knowing that we will need to construct those sidewalks.
Okay, so that is essentially decided upon in fiscal twenty-five, but will be funded. And so that is why neither it nor the Darwin and Hodges Lane projects, which are going to actually be funded fully out of fiscal twenty-five money, that's why they're not on here.
Correct.
Right, and, and just for total clarity, um, those two, the Thirteenth Avenue and the Chestnut Avenue sidewalk are in the old system. So there will be a community vote. We're assuming that, given the support that it's had up till now, it'll move to construction. But I don't want people to feel like we're ignoring the process that we said we'd go through. There will be a community vote, just as there was with Hodges and Darwin. And once we have the final design revisions, we'll do the Chestnut vote. We're currently in, in planning stages with Thirteenth and our first community meeting will be on, uh, April twenty-fourth. So people will see the design plans and talk to our design engineers then. So we're still in design process for those.
Okay, that's fine. So the meeting that you just had was the first of two, essentially, the, the Chestnut meeting that you just described.
Uh, yeah, it was probably the fourth.
Uh, well, the, of the final, yeah, yeah.
But we'll, we will hold a vote, uh, shortly, once we have the final.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Dibala.
Thank you. I, I was going to suggest something similar to the mayor, which was that we go down the list. We, we respect the process that the city staff has, has undertaken at our direction, knowing that it's the first time out, knowing it's not perfect, um, and might need some tweaks, some adjustments. But going through and first, to make ourselves feel better, take out the things that can be delayed. And then, uh, talk about the ones that are problematic. And I can start with Ward Two before we leave Ward Six. So there were three Flower Avenue requests. At one point, they got combined into a traffic study for Flower Avenue. So, so if staff thinks that combining a couple of things together in one traffic study is more efficient for Ward Six, that sure seems to make sense to me. Um, just putting that out there. And I would leave it to staff to, to think through the staging. Because I'm still, I'm still a little fuzzy on build a sidewalk before you've done a trust, traffic study. I don't need to understand that. I just need to know that you guys are okay with, with the sequence there. So as far as Ward Two goes, um, the first thing on Ward Two is several sets of sidewalks. And in talking with lots of residents and with the city staff, um, at, the priority, uh, would be for Garland Avenue sidewalk design, um, and Jackson and Central Sidewalk design can wait, can, can wait a year. In, in my view, designing and building one sidewalk is probably better than designing three and not getting to build any of them. So, um, that would be two places where I think it would be okay to amend the spreadsheet, Jackson and Central. Going further down the list, the first true traffic study for the, for fiscal twenty-six is Flower Avenue. As I just explained, combines three, uh, three different, three different requests in the same stretch. Um, that's been a problem for many, many years.
Um, I'm really sorry, Councilmember Dibala. I just want to make sure that, uh, the folks that are keeping track of the sheets, um, caught what, um, what you were recommending. And that was keeping.
Keep Garland.
Keep Garland.
Delay Jackson.
Delay Jackson and Central.
Uh, so that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars right there.
Yeah, because it's design and, um, or, I'm sorry.
Because it's designed for all three. Construction is assumed to be in the next fiscal year.
Correct.
Um, Flower Avenue Traffic Study, enough said. Um, I think I just heard that the Chestnut Avenue Traffic Study can be delayed. So we could make with, um, we, with, uh, Councilmember Landman's agreement, we would make that a zero for now. Correct. Um, and then I was unclear about the Orchard and Fifth Avenue Traffic Study, which is ranked much lower, but I was under the impression also that that might be, um, something that could be delayed. Councilmember Schlegel or staff?
Are you, you're asking me?
I am, yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I, it's, uh, I'm, I'm inclined, oh, well, you've mentioned two projects. I'm inclined in this first year of this staff analysis approach to by and large, like, work with the methodology that was developed and approved by the council. So I see the, the rating for the Orchard and Fifth Traffic Study is twenty-eight of, when it's normed to a hundred and, and which is the lowest. Uh, so I don't see how we, with seventy-five thousand dollars, we could get down to that, to that area.
All right.
With the, since, since you mentioned both, with the Orchard Avenue Speed Hump, which is five thousand dollars. I, um, uh, having studied the methodology, I don't know if Orchard Avenue would ever get enough points on the, with the methodology used because it's, it's an oddity, folks. It's, uh, it's got a small number of residences on it. Um, a total of thirteen, thirteen row houses. It has the VFW, it has a school bus stop, it has a playground, it has the community garden, it has a grandfathered light industrial commercial area with Maggio roofing. The methodology looks, I think, to a certain extent at the number of people living in an area. But the complexities of that street, as it functions as a cut-through towards New Hampshire Avenue to connect from Eastern to New Hampshire, make it extremely hazardous enough. Having had a community garden plot for several years, I, I've seen car chases coming up that street. At, I would, I tend to try really hard not to exaggerate speeds, so I would say forty-five to fifty miles an hour.
So to be clear, I did not ask about whether you wanted to take that five thousand dollar project off. I was concerned about the bigger number.
Okay, all right, yeah. So I'm not sure whether that project is, it says not recommended by staff, but, um, in the yellow bar. So I thought I should.
Oh, okay.
I should, uh, I should point out that there's a school bus stop at the bottom and it's, if you've been over there to the VFW, it's the block that includes the VFW parking lot. It's very, it's a very idiosyncratic part town there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I just want to confirm, um, again, because we're trying to make sure that we're keeping an adequate, um, list. So Councilmember Schlegel, I just want to confirm that you are okay with the removal of the Speed Hump at Orchard Ave?
I am advocating for the inclusion of the Speed Hump at Orchard Ave, but I'm okay with the removal of the traffic study at this, at, for this year.
Okay, so you're keeping the Speed Hump and removing the traffic study?
Could you clarify what the yellow bars signify, uh, on this chart versus the other colors? I have not been able to discern.
Are you talking about the list of all the different projects with their various scoring?
I'm talking about the version that we got for this evening's meeting that has yellow bars on it.
Yeah, so those are the two projects that were not included in the initial list. And they were added in. One was simply, it was scored, it was intended to be on the list, it didn't make it into the final list. The other one, we were asked to take a look, um, and that's Orchard and Fifth. At kind of, is there any place that we can place a speed bump along that, um, stretch road? And we found a spot that we can put it in that meets all the criteria.
Okay, so, um, yeah, continue.
Just give me one second. Um, is there any way, um, on the reconciliation that we are able to denote, um, which council member made, uh, the suggestion? Right now, we're sticking with wards, but it, it could potentially go in a different direction. So if we could just make sure that we are noting who, who is putting what forward. Thank you.
Um, so. So the, the reason I wanted to do that is, is because that does free up a fair amount of money.
I'm so sorry. The Orchard, um, Speed Hump is Schlegel?
Mayor, I heard it proposed by Councilmember Dibala and confirmation from Schlegel.
Councilmember Dibala, were you proposing that or were you speaking on behalf of a summary that conversation you had with Councilmember Schlegel? I, I think it's important for us to make sure that council members are, if, if they're putting something forward, that, that you put your item forward, um, so that we can keep track of who's putting item. Now, any council member could put an item on the list, but I do just want to make sure that we're keeping track of, of who's making a proposal. And who, if, if you agree with it, that's another thing, but I just want to make sure we're keeping adequate account of who's accounting for it.
It's confusing to me, Madam Mayor, because you had said for things in our own ward, we should speak.
Yes.
I think what has happened is that Councilmember Dibala is summarizing conversations she's had with other people, but it, uh, in order to be efficient, but that's the confusion. Uh, because she's raising issues in other wards, but, you know, so you have specified a different methodology.
Yes, because I, I, it's really helpful for others that are reviewing the list later to know if the ward that is representing the item, the council member agrees.
Well, I thought I was asking as opposed to proposing for whatever that's worth.
Okay, no worries, no worries at all. So let's just make sure, um, that Councilmember Schlegel was confirming, um, the Speed Hump addition and the, um, and the traffic study ru- removal.
Mayor, so you, you would like us to identify both confirmations and removals?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, any items that make it on this, that where we discuss and there's a, a recommendation that ultimately members of the council will need to vote on, it's helpful to know which council member is, is making that recommendation.
May I ask as a point of order, if, if, if we, if nobody speaks about a certain row on this spreadsheet, does that mean it's included? Like what, what is, if no, if we just closed out this session right now, what would get appropriated, what would, what would be approved right now?
Yeah, so I, that's why I'm asking for each council member to speak to their items, right? Because each item on this list is associated with a council, with a ward. So the hope is that council members will speak to all of their item, their respective ward items on their list about what, whether or not they want them or not. Um, and that then will, uh, at least make sure that we're able to discuss or have some decision from the council member in terms of which items, um, they are recommending to move forward or de-prioritize or add.
So is silence deemed assent? In other words, if there is no request to remove or add something and it's on here and it's in your ward, are you still supposed to say something?
Yes.
About every single thing on the list that is.
It is, it is helpful for us to know if there's an item that's on this list that you say, hey, you know what, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a big deal. I am fine with us moving forward without it. Um, it's a lower priority.
Or adding it or, or keeping it in.
Or keeping it in.
To say, I want to, if I don't say keep it in, it's gone?
Right.
For my ward? Okay, then I would ask, uh, Councilmember Dibala, that we go back to the Plan A from the mayor, which is that each person speak to their ward, even though what you're trying to do is efficient. It's very confusing.
Right, because what could happen is, the reason I'm doing it this way is that you'll end up with a bunch of items that, that are, there's no decision because the decision is that if they weren't on that list, they got dropped. And so it's important for us to know that folks are okay with items being dropped or at least, you know, not included on the, on the, on the list. So, um, again, I, I appreciate and I've reviewed the, the consolidated list, but I need to document the decisions so that when we go through and do the final votes, everybody kind of knows where we are.
So continuing with Ward Two?
Continue with Ward Two.
All right, so we talked about Garland Avenue, Jackson and Central, we talked about the sidewalks, we talked about the Flower Avenue Traffic Study addressing concerns of a number of residents that raise different issues. Um, the next thing on the list, which is important to me, is Lincoln Avenue. The, I would like to propose, uh, an additional solution and I'm going to tell you why. The, the residents, and there were quite a few of them, who requested, uh, attention to Lincoln Avenue. The one thing they have is speed bumps. And while the staff believes that adding a couple more speed bumps is a good short-term measure, the things that, that, when we went back and looked with staff at the list of things that residents asked for, they were mostly things that you wouldn't do unless you did a traffic study. And so I'm requesting that we add a traffic study for Lincoln. And I was told that it would rate about the same because it's fixing the same set of problems. So it would rate about fifty. Um, and I understand that there is a capacity issue, um, in terms of doing a lot of speed, a lot of traffic studies all at once. But I, I and the residents would very much prefer to have it. to have it on the list, to have it queued up. And if it can start at, at the end of next year, great. But it, but at least it's in there. And so, to be more specific, this has been a longstanding problem. Speeding, volume, stop sign running, trucks, sideswipe cars. It's gotten much worse recently due to the new stop signs at either end. So, there may be a purple, somebody asked me, there may be a purple line connection. There may not. But for sure, there's two new stop signs that divert traffic onto Lincoln. The counts on Lincoln compared to a few years ago are sky high. The counts on Boyd, the next street over, not so much. So, in the analysis, in the criteria that the staff used, the evaluation criteria, sideswipe cars and property damage didn't get counted, but yet they are a great concern to people who live there for all the obvious reasons. So I, I do think there's a great case to be made here for taking a holistic look at that stretch. And so, my request is to add an additional solution for Lincoln Avenue. So, creating those extra two speed bumps in there just in case they work. But let's have a, let's have a traffic study on the list as a way to look at it more holistically and address the long-term concerns that, that, that need to be addressed. So, before I take any questions on that, because there might be some, I just want to say, and then Prince George's Avenue at Belford Place, the crosswalk has rated low. It is important to residents who live there, they did just get new sidewalks. And so, the absence of a crosswalk is just really obvious. So I would like it to stay on the list, but I recognize that it was rated relatively low compared to other items. My goal, as you know from last week, is to see if we can get to the end of an adjusted list, cover virtually all of the projects that, that cannot be delayed. And that might require adding a modest amount of, of funds to the overall pot of four twenty-five.
And I just wanted to caution that Prince George's Avenue is a raised walkway, which is a traffic calming measure, not a crosswalk, which is not a traffic calming measure. So, I know that we've had some confusion about crosswalks don't get addressed as traffic calming measures. This was a raised elevated crosswalk.
Right.
Which is why it's considered a traffic calming measure.
Okay.
If it was just a marked crosswalk, it would not be on this list.
Thank you for clarifying that. I actually didn't know that. Alright, so it is on, still on this list and I would like it to stay on this list. But my bigger concerns are the ones that come higher up, as I just explained. So that's it for me for Ward Two. So did we get all that?
Okay.
Yeah, there we go. So the, the, I think the estimate on Lincoln Traffic Study would be a rating of fifty and a cost of fifty thousand, which is the standard estimate for all the, all the, all the traffic studies.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes.
Do you really think that we can just jump to putting a number fifty on that, Councilmember Dibala? I'm sorry to question that. I hear your rationale, but it seems confusing to me.
I, I'm basing that on conversations I've had with staff and I will leave it to staff as to whether they want to add anything or not.
So, we have a, we, we looked at Lincoln Avenue specifically and scored Lincoln Avenue for speed humps. The score is site-specific. And so, it would have a similar score to the speed hump score.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Good question.
And I just want to make sure that I'm closing the loop on a couple of things, just so that our, our list is clear. So Councilmember Dibala proposed to keep the Garland Avenue sidewalk? Councilmember Dibala?
Number eighteen.
Yep, number eighteen. Councilmember Dibala is proposing to, I'm assuming, keep the traffic study for Flower?
Yes. I thought I said that.
Yep, that's line twenty-two.
On the spreadsheet.
We have the chart actively doing the math here. Do you guys not have that available?
It's just not in our packets. It's not in our packet.
Oh, they don't have it?
They don't have a printout of it.
No, we don't have a printout, so we're just, that's why it's a little bit like we're having weird.
You don't have what we see here.
We have it on our screens, but not on our printouts that we got from the city.
We do not have it on this screen.
Oh, you don't have it?
I don't know why.
Because the screen, the screen is showing the math. It's also notated with which council member made the request. So all that information is present. What's that?
Okay, I just, okay, I'm sorry. I'm so confused on what's happening. When we're saying the line, we're talking about the Excel lines. Oh, they can't see the column.
Referring to the numbers in the left-hand column.
Okay.
You cannot see them.
Okay. Well, I, I just, I think it's okay. I think it's okay.
Yeah.
You could, you could trust us. It's just so that we can make sure that the line, the proper lines are being marked. But you should be able to see in real time in columns, G, H, and I, those changes that are made based on the column numbers.
Yes, it's just confusing to identify what, which number you're talking, what column, what number.
May I?
Yeah.
May I ask a question of Councilmember Dibala about the Lincoln Avenue proposal and also of staff? It's a two-part question. First, Lincoln Avenue, that, that corridor, as I've observed, when it continues on to the stop sign, the four-way stop that was installed at Carroll, and then it, and that next block, the three hundred block is in Ward Three. And then beyond that, I do see a lot of traffic that goes straight across one way or the other. And that would be in Councilmember Gilbert's portion of Lincoln Avenue, which is Ward Four. So, I guess my, my most important question is, are you, Councilmember Dibala, proposing a study that would look at that entire corridor from Maple to, all the way to Ellen?
I was hoping to hear from the other two council members about that. Whether you want to propose to include it or not.
I don't, I wouldn't know what the cost would be.
Propose to include?
So, so Lincoln, I, I've been talking about Lincoln Avenue in Ward Two, the next block up to the stop sign at Carroll is in Ward Three. And on the other side of Carroll, on the other side of the stop sign, is Ward, is.
Two more blocks of Lincoln Avenue.
Two more blocks down to Maple. So, Councilmember Schlegel's question was, what about the other blocks? And, and I, I only know what I know about Ward Two. I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know.
And I think one of the challenges is that this traffic study, have staff looked into the possibility of a traffic study of Lincoln? No, so what's?
I mean, there was one in two thousand seven. I don't know what was the city spent at that time. We, we've just done our first round of traffic studies and we got a traffic engineer, a traffic study RFP. We got five responses back. They ranged in price from fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars with a very specific scope of work. So I would think that, you know, fifty K is sort of a good, you know, low ball for a simple one.
Okay, and it sounds like what council members are talking about is doing the full
Entire length.
Entire length of Lincoln.
I would ask whether the staff has either any anecdote, you didn't, you didn't rate it because it wasn't brought up either of those stretches of Lincoln, correct? But do you have any anecdotal data as to whether the problem continues?
There's a different set of problems on that section of Lincoln Avenue. Speeding is one of them.
Which section?
Between Maple and, and Carroll Avenue.
Yeah. If I may, yeah. Personally, I can tell you, it's a little difficult coming off of Jefferson onto Lincoln with the traffic that comes up from Maple. They get up to pretty decent speeds. So if you're turning off of Link, off of Jefferson left to go up to Carroll, that's a pretty dangerous situation. So I'd love to know what they think about that.
Yeah, yeah. We have added, you know, the center line on that street because of the speed of traffic and there's curbs. It's a, it's a really different environment than the rest of Lincoln. But there certainly have been historic traffic concerns over the ti, over time.
Okay, so in order to, because we're out of time for this discussion, move this item forward. It sounds like council members, Councilmember Dibala has proposed a Lincoln Traffic Study. It sounds like Councilmember Schlegel would like to have the segment of Lincoln that is part of Ward Three potentially included. Are you saying no?
I'm not saying that. I'm, I have, I have concerns about pushing in this direction, given like the need for real fiscal prudence.
Okay.
And also, not knowing how much of that corridor's problems are due to purple line construction right now. So, I, I'm happy that Councilmember Dibala had, had proposed that. I, I do feel that if you're going to do that kind of a study, it's important for us to know more about what are the possible recommendations it could make. It, it's not in a sort of a grid of streets. So, you wouldn't come out with a one-way recommendation, for example. So I, I, I think that I, I'm not a traffic expert, but I do think that if you were going to study that corridor, you'd want to study it all the way through to Maple, just based on the vehicle traffic and, and directional flow that I've seen. And that being said, I'm, I'm still wondering whether after purple lines down, we might see some easing of that.
Yeah, okay.
So, I, I think I addressed that a few minutes ago by saying that it appears to be mostly not the purple line. It appears to be the changes in the stop signs based on the traffic count data that was done. The requests, the kinds of requests that residents made in, when they pointed this set of problems out, time of day restrictions, one-way streets, access for, for trucks, that kind of thing. Those are all things that would require a look at, not just Lincoln, but the neighboring streets. And whether it includes that extra block over to Carroll, which might have similar issues. I, I don't have an opinion, one way or the other.
Okay, alright, well, we're going to stick with where we are, which is Councilmember Dibala is proposing a traffic study on Lincoln. And, and staff will confirm the dollar amount for it. We're assuming about fifty thousand dollars. Okay. So I just want to, Councilmember Westlech?
Yeah, say one more thing. I did also just give up a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in design studies for sidewalks, just in terms of fiscal prudence. Just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Westlech?
Hi, okay, I will move through the Words Six quickly. Just go ahead and copy and paste, Westlech, that I am in favor of the Wildwood and Glen Side sidewalk, both the design and construction. I am in favor of the sidewalk on Hammond Ave. And the speed bump on Holton. Yes, okay. Then down to the next one, I am in favor of the two speed humps on Kennewick.
Okay, hold on one second, Councilmember Westlech. I just want to confirm that for the Hammond Ave design, correct?
Hammond Ave is just the designs. The Wildwood and Glen Side, where it's just the one house. Staff listed design and construction in the same year.
Correct.
If, if I understood that correctly, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, so in favor of Kennewick, ba, ba, ba. Next one down is Wildwood and Merwood Speed Hump, which is, yep, in favor of that. Go down more, Hammond and Anne Speed Humps, yes. And, excuse me, and then, okay, so then that last one, thank you so much to the staff. It's giving a lot more context to this. What I would recommend to my fellow council members is to keep that fifty K there in order to broaden the scope of the current New Hampshire Gardens Traffic Study to include looking at if Hammond could be one-way as well as considering the current MCPS school bus stops that are several along Wildwood and one is at Anne and Lockney. But basically, this stretch through New Hampshire Gardens. So, basically, keeping the fifty K, but holding it, assuming that if we, we ask them to come back and with a broader scope, that it would cost more than the fifty K that's already been set aside in FY twenty-five.
So, okay. And so, okay. Alright. So, Councilmember Landman?
I'm not sure whether Councilmember Gilbert's had one up first.
I'm sorry. I was trying to get the big ones out the way.
Let's do that, let's do it.
The ones with the most, the most talking to do.
I'll wait.
And I'm sorry, I did not see your hand.
No, it's okay, I just put it up.
Whichever, you guys can play rock.
I can be very brief, there's almost nothing from Ward One on here.
Okay.
I will say, if you look at the item that is at the top of our list, it's probably number one, but I'm not sure, because I don't know if there's a previous page. But that recommendation for, oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. The one I'm trying to find is the Grant Avenue
Mark Crosswalk?
Speed Hunt that is labeled projects not recommended. And so, that's probably on the next page. Okay, so that is in wards both one and four. And you'll recall from, I recall from your previous presentation that the reason it was not recommended was because initially the analysis was that the, that the slope was too steep. We took a look at the ISO bars, if that's the right term, Roger? He's the, he's the expert. And concluded that there was one section along there that might actually fall within the acceptable steepness. And I believe Director Braithwaite, he said you would go back and take another look at that.
This is Grant?
Yes, I just want to make sure, it, it looks like there's just, there's two items. There's one that is listed on the, in the projects not recommended by staff and the speed humps.
Yeah.
And then there's another item that's at line thirteen that says marked crosswalk.
Yes, and I, and I support that and put my name next to that one, please. But the one that I'm talking about now is, and I'm not necessarily asking that it be added until you're able to do this, Director Braithwaite, but I think you indicated you would take another look at the steepness of the grade to determine whether it was too steep at one place.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not recalling getting anything on Grant Avenue from anybody. And we are happy to do it.
Okay.
Not familiar with that. So if someone could.
Okay, perfect.
Add that in an email, we could take.
Yep.
It says in the thing that it exceeds eight percent, right? Okay, so, the other.
So I just want to make sure, can we, give me one second. Let me just make sure that this is properly marked. So, this item that's being proposed is part of the projects not recommended. It was.
A speed hump.
Speed hump. It's showing, it looks like multiple, because it's showing fifteen thousand.
Yeah. But the, the understanding that I had after a very brief hallway conversation is that much of it is too steep, but not all of it. And that there was one area that was not at eight percent. And that that was the, and it would be only room for one. So the price would be lower, I guess, whatever would be half of that. Is it, what is the per speed hump estimation?
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred, so.
Or five thousand.
The maximum would be fifty-five hundred of the cost of that if you go back and determine that it is eligible.
It would be this section coming off of Piney Branch with the middle school on your left before you get to Chestnut. It goes over a slight rise and then begins to drop again, but it doesn't drop steeply until south of Chestnut.
So that is not exactly a regular reconciliation item, but it's, go back and maybe review that?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And then, um,
And just to kinda make sure, Councilmember Landman, you're clear. Um, if there needs to be, if staff goes back and reviews, um, I would hope that you would have a conversation with, um, um, Director Braithwaite. Then when we come back, if there's a need for an adjustment, you can propose that adjustment before we vote.
Correct.
I, I will just say that speed humps and school buses are a bad combo, just in terms of rider comfort. And unless there is speed in that particular block, we would, we would try, we try to address speed bumps in areas where we have situations of known high traffic. I don't know that traffic gets up to a high speed there. Um, so I don't know that it would cau- create any traffic calming. I don't know that we have speeding between Piney Branch and Chestnut on Grant. I do know, however, there's a lot of school bus, um, traffic. Most, all the school buses are crossing that way, and it does, it, you know, it's not a pleasant ride.
Yeah, I think the people get, kinda rev up their engines as they go up there. You know, like to get into the parking lot. So we'll see what you conclude about the. So the, the marked crosswalk, I wanted to give my, my, uh, for wards, uh, one and four for Grant Avenue between Piney Branch and Holly, which is, uh, under traffic calming, to give my Ward Four, um, colleague an opportunity to weigh in. I support it, and maybe two names can go next to it if he agrees, because it's both wards. Listed as both wards.
Which project with that? I'm sorry.
I think it's the Grant Ave between Piney Branch and Holly.
It's the first one under traffic calming.
Point of order, may I ask a question about the marked crosswalk?
It's got wards one and four in the far left corner.
Yeah, I was curious, as I was looking at that one, at what points does it enter into Ward Four? And, and you're talking about, um, speed humps?
No, it's just a crosswalk. And actually, it, it, if it's going to be on this list, it would be a raised crosswalk, and the price is off, because regular crosswalks shouldn't be on the list. It's currently part of the design for Chestnut Avenue sidewalk, to have a crosswalk at this location.
Yeah.
So one way or another, we're gonna be putting a crosswalk in there. Whether or not it's a raised crosswalk to make it a traffic calming measure, um, is. We, we have a, it's an area.
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused at what location would a raised crosswalk go?
It would be at Chestnut on Grant. It's the sidewalk lead into the school.
Would this be, um, downhill from the point where the school buses would have to drive over it? In other words, like to the.
They'll be crossing it, yeah. One of the things with raised crosswalks is they're a little wider than speed bumps, significantly wider than the speed bump. So you don't, you still have the bump factor, but it's not quite as abrupt as a speed bump.
Yeah, you know, uh, in light of that, that it's a raised one, then perhaps a speed hump would be, uh, to, a bridge too far, because it's the same general area. So, um, I didn't realize this was raised, but that, that explains why it's on this, on this list.
And so, staff, can we, can we make sure that we fly?
Oh, already done. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, and, um, we talked about the delay in the Chest, in Chestnut Avenue, and I believe that might exhaust my Ward One. Am I right?
Think so.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Gilbert, I think, I think, I think you, did you have another?
I would appreciate you putting my name next to the, sorry, um, the, um, Chestnut Avenue. And, uh, Councilmember Dibala, she brought it up, but not, she doesn't have to bear the load.
Oh, and I, I found your item, Councilmember Gilbert, I apologize for that. And it, and it's a biggie.
Hancock between Sherman and Lee. I support that project, yes.
Actually, I believe that street is halfway in Ward One and halfway in Ward Four. If, if this is the block we were looking at on the map together, am I right about that? Yeah.
Yeah, the block of Hancock between Lee and Sherman. Yeah.
So, you can. And I should just, uh, share with you, um, Councilmember Gilbert. I discussed this block with, um, Director Braithwaite, because some had expressed concern about the trees. It looks like their plan would be for the design to consider the cross, or the sidewalk taking part of the road bed. Uh, so the road would get narrower, um, but the trees would be protected. Am I characterizing that correctly? Okay, just.
I know that was, um, some of the concern that was shared. And, um, are we gonna lose the parking then there? Because I know that's a concern as well, um, about losing parking.
Yeah, it, you know, we don't have design at this point, so it's a little premature, but that would be evaluated as part of the design.
And there will be opportunities for input regarding the design, correct? Okay.
All right. Um, Councilmember Hansak.
I, I just, I just wanna reiterate, if I may, uh, fellow council members and staff, there is not a single project in Ward Five on the list. Um, that is not because we don't have needs in Ward Five. Um, and I, I, I am really struggling here about, I, I have had many discussions with a number of you, including staff, about some things that I consider to be priorities. I think the biggest one for me is, uh, a number of issues on Houston Avenue and Roanoke in particular. I do have an email showing that a request was made, it doesn't say traffic study. At least one request in, uh, writing was made two years ago on Houston Avenue and several years before that. Um, it's not entirely clear to me why the Houston Avenue study didn't make it onto this list. Um, and in light of what Councilmember, uh, Dibala was just saying about holistic views, I just placeholder, please, colleagues and staff. If we are going to look holistically at, uh, roads that go down to Sligo Creek Parkway, such as Flower Avenue, uh, between Carroll and Sligo Creek Parkway, I would beg you to put as a placeholder Houston Avenue and Kennebec, that are also through streets to Sligo Creek Parkway. I am not suggesting that we post one of them, add these to, you know, our reconciliation list right now, but please consider them holistically if we're going to consider that other kind of traffic study. You can, you can put them on here. I, I heard people using the language, queuing up. By all means, please queue it up.
And this would be for a traffic?
But I don't know whether that's really, I mean, I don't wanna go o- out of process, but if we're gonna be using the language of queue it up, uh, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I'm tempted to queue it up as something I'd like to officially make it known that I, as a council member, am saying that this is something that somehow didn't make the list.
And this would be a traffic study or?
Uh, it would be a traffic study for Houston and Kennebec, um, in a holistic view with Flower Avenue as through streets that go down to the Parkway. Thank you. I'm not, I don't, I'm not convinced that it's the right time to do that right now, because I think that we do need to look at the purple line traffic and the changes that are going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Schlegel.
Councilmember Hansak, thank you for that, and I, I mean, I've certainly seen for many years what goes on on Kennebec and Houston. Um, but I, uh, I wanted to circle back, um, to Councilmember Dibala's, um, um, in, in, uh, inclusion of a consideration for a Lincoln Avenue traffic study. And, um, Councilmember Gilbert, uh, you had voiced, um, observations about Jefferson and Lincoln. And so I felt like I, my comments may have shut it down. I, I, I think what I'm saying is kind of like, if there is to be a traffic study there, it should be, it should be inclusive of all three ward sections of the street.
Understood you. Understood.
I, I think I understood you too. I think I also heard that the stretch in Ward Two and Three, they have very similar problems. The stretch in Ward Four is kind of a different kettle of fish. So I would like a, a, a technical recog- not right now, a technical recommendation as to whether it makes sense to do both sides of Carroll, if they have very different sets of problems. Or whether it, as I think I hear Roger, uh, Councilmember Schlegel suggesting, we just do all three. Um, but we don't need the answer to that tonight. Maybe you can think about that.
Okay.
I just meant from a costing out standpoint, so we know what, whether
Right.
if they're gonna give us a cost out.
I, I, great. I do want us to move on, because we have a whole nother reconciliation list to get, get through. Um, and just, I saw the math happening on the reconciliation for traffic calming. Um, just want to close the loop on that. So, um, just as a reminder, we are forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars over budget if all of the items that are on this list are ultimately voted on and approved to move forward. Um, and in order for us to, um, make sure, um, as we are transitioning to the other budget reconciliation process, we could just have, um, uh, staff to, um, on that worksheet, um, put in as of and increase, um, of this amount.
So may, may I amend my thirty thousand dollars from last week to forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty? Is that, uh, so?
I might be able to make the number smaller if I, because I think this still contains the recommendation for speed humps on Grant, which if there is a raised sidewalk, I no longer wanna, uh, propose the speed hump.
Oh, yeah, you did say that, too.
Yeah, and I see, I see it's still on here at fifteen thousand. It's, I can't tell you what number it is, because I can't see the numbers, but maybe Cindy can do that.
Okay, so you're looking at the Grant, line thirty?
Thirty-three.
Speed bump, the dollar says fifty-five.
The raised cross, crosswalk was a reference, I believe, to, um, this first item that is currently costing at two hundred and fifty dollars? Not, not the item that she added, which is a speed hump.
Correct.
So you'd like to remove the item that she added that was previously unfunded?
It's previously unfunded, take it back away?
Even though that's a speed hump and not.
Because she, because, uh, Director Braithwaite indicated that there is gonna be a raised crosswalk almost in the same spot.
Okay.
So, but the raised crosswalk funding number probably is inaccurate.
Yeah, so it should be fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred.
So it goes down by about ten K instead of fifteen K.
Thank you.
Okay.
Doesn't a hundred percent solve the problem.
It helps. It gets us back down to thirty.
Where you pay.
That's where I started.
Okay.
And I think it's that now, whatever.
Okay. So I think, let's see, we're still over about thirty thousand. Okay. All right, thirty-three thousand now. Okay, great. So we're gonna move into, uh, budget reconciliation. With that, we'll turn the discussion over.
Point of order, Madam America, it's like eleven, um, almost. And I, I have a point to be, and I, I think that you have made a big total offer for having a, a follow-on meeting if we didn't finish tonight. And I just feel like starting this whole other process right now is maybe more than I have the ability to stay awake and conscious for.
Um, so we can leave it to a vote. Would members of council be willing to go another thirty minutes so that we can get our reconciliation items on the list, um, for the, for the budget? All those in favor of?
May we have discussion?
Councilmember Schlegel?
Um, I'm, I'm okay with hanging in here another thirty minutes. I am pretty tired. Uh, I don't, I wanna be, make sure I'm doing, we're all doing good decision-making. But, um, I, I would vote for another thirty minutes if we can still hold open adding additional items at our next work session, because I'm finding that we had this one week to, to digest people's initial put-ins. And, and there's a little bit of a give and take in a conversation going on that I like, and I like to see it go on just for another interval.
So just to remind folks, um, the, uh, per my email, we are putting items forward for the budget reconciliation. Then we will vote on whether or not we will move forward with a meeting on Monday. So what we would be voting on is a work session on Monday to continue budget reconciliation. And we would still ultimately, um, be ready to vote on those items by Wednesday. So that's why I'm really pushing for us, for those items that people want to have on the budget reconciliation list, for us to go ahead and put them out there, so that we could start talking about them. Be it one-on-ones, um, from, uh, tonight through, through, uh, the possible meeting on Monday or, um, on Monday. But we, we really need to get these reconciliation items that folks have on this list. So if we can give ourselves, it's ten fifty-four, um, and we can table the, um, council compensation committee, um, item work session, and we can, we can, I hate to push that, because I know that's something we need to do, but we can push that, um, uh, to next week if we have to. But we really need to get these items on the reconciliation list. Um, so can we pull up the reconciliation spreadsheet?
Just need to.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Uh, so all those in favor of continuing until, continuing until, uh, eleven? Can I get it till eleven forty-five, just because people like to talk, uh, eleven forty-five? Please say aye. Aye. How many?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so we're gonna go till eleven forty-five? Let's pull up.
It's gonna take a moment to get settled.
May I ask Councilmember Landman a question?
Sure.
Councilmember Landman, um, are you able to add some of your items in writing? Uh, is, or were you hoping to have more dialogue tonight?
I, I think what we've just seen with the reconciliation on something as simple and straightforward as sidewalks suggests that actual dialogue is required for this to be meaningful. And frankly, I'm experiencing a medical issue right now. It's making it very difficult for me to concentrate. So I
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to, that problem, but I don't think it's, we missed an entire city council meeting due to no fault of anybody, and I feel that this process is tel- telescoping in a way that is not productive for, especially because we never got around to finishing our council priorities discussion. It feels like we need to be doing that as part of this process as well. But the vote has been taken, so what are you gonna do?
Appreciate you sharing.
Okay. All right, so are we?
Getting there.
Yep. And just want to check with staff to see whether or not there are any items for discussion?
There are a few things to mention, Mayor. Um, just give me one moment, please.
So I did distribute an updated version of this list. It's a color copy that I put out.
Okay, as the, um, city clerk just mentioned, there is a separate copy, a new copy of the reconciliation items. And I'd like, just for a moment, to point out a few, uh, clarifications and changes since the last time we spoke. If you look at the green section, um, titled General Fund Revenues, there is a adjustment, an increase to the grant revenue of forty thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. That is a result of our Director of Finance reaching out to the county to confirm the revenue that we'd receive in the year. And, um, confirmation was that we would see an increase from what was proposed in the FY twenty-six budget. If you come down to the general fund expenditures, you'll see that there has been a slight adjustment to the communication specialists, about a decrease of, uh, one thousand dollars, just representing a more detailed analysis of that salary and fringe. It was one thirty, I believe. If you come down further to Decrease Food Insecurity Grant, you'll also see, followed by that Increase in Community Quality of Life, uh, a decrease of sixty thousand in the first and an increase of sixty thousand in the second. That is simply to combine food insecurity and community quali- quality of life as a That is simply to combine food insecurity and community quali- quality of life as a single grant program. Um that total will now be a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That is separate from the one hundred and ten thousand dollar increase proposed by councilmember Schlegel. There is also uh following the sixty thousand dollar increase, a. Adjustment to what was a estimate of seventy-five thousand dollars. For the decrease in salaries and fringe benefits for non-union staff. Uh the number again because of some additional staff analysis. Has been adjusted from seventy-five thousand to a decrease of ninety-five thousand one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. And that represents the decrease from non-union staff of approximately four point six percent to. The uh comparable increase to uh our AFSMI union, which is three percent. And then finally, on the next page, you'll see highlighted in yellow. Is also some information that was the result of reaching out to the county about cable grant funds. And there's an additional adjustment in the equipment revenue, a downward adjustment of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The remaining items are the items that were proposed by city council.
Great. Thank you very much, okay, I'm going to kick us off. Um in terms of a general fund expenditure item. Um based on the um bill that passed in terms of restricted covenants. Um one of the things that was not discussed um was follow-up in terms of. Ca- um funds needed to actually implement the removal of restricted covenants. Um we are still uh working to finalize the um. The numbers, but I would propose an increase in the budget of ninety thousand dollars for. For the restricted covenants. Implementation. Sure, what? Sure, so um the new bill would require us to um post in the newspaper. Um also, we would have to continue to uh work with partners to make sure that we have the complete list of. Um homes that would be um impacted by the blanket removal. Um so there are some administrative um costs associated with that. So that's the the only thing, but again, we're still trying to finalize the cost. But basically um the bill that passed in Annapolis would allow us to um some of the changes. We would need to post in a newspaper, we wouldn't have to do first-class mail, which means there would be some cost savings. Um but we still would need to make sure that we're able to administratively. Identify the properties that we would want to have the deeds changed or modified. Make the posting and then um work to uh submit the necessary paperwork. Um to the county so that the restricted language can be removed and work with. Uh historic Tacoma around the actual removal, the the language that would need to be removed within the deed.
May I ask a a question? Fat, so is this a staff estimate or do you want a staff estimate to confirm that?
I've received a staff estimate, but they're still working on it.
Okay, great, so that's.
So that would be ninety thousand. Are there any other items that people would like to propose? Um councilmember DeBala, you had a question?
I have a question that maybe you said and I just missed it. Writing that's already on the list, so um the total up at the first box. The first yellow, increase the utility rate, bring in an additional ten thousand dollars. How much were we thinking was gonna come in before we wanted to add ten thousand dollars?
We don't have that information at the moment, uh it's something we could provide to you in in writing tomorrow.
Roughly, not now, but I mean, yeah, I just wanna know approximately ten thousand dollars more than what.
Sure.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Councilmember Honsak.
Uh councilmember Landman, the decrease for salaries for non-union staff, is that the? If I recall quickly, is that um all the non-union staff or is that the line item that you were um talking to me about before the council?
Yeah, um thank you for uh reminding me uh about that, councilmember Honsak. Uh when I initially proposed this, I was woefully unaware of how many people were not members of the union. And it was not my intention that that the staff who are paid hourly wages, temporary. Staff who are. Who are seasonal or um or that the administrative staff be included. It was intended to be addressed to management level staff uh who are not members. So um I gather, although I have not had a chance to read it yet. I know that we were given a document addressing that information tonight, so I don't know what the. Number would be, but um it should be, I I would like to uh amend my previous uh item to. Make it clear that it's intended to focus on management level non-union staff, not uh seasonal, temporary. Or administrative. And I I believe that you guys in your office have made a calculation themselves, but I have not had a chance to review it.
So the ninety-five thousand dollars might be in.
It would be a smaller. A smaller reduction in expenditures.
So you wanted to say non-union management staff?
Yes, thank you.
Could I ask for a clarification by management staff? Do you have a better idea of where you draw that line? There's a lot of middle middle-level management, but it they. Sergeant supervises.
Thank you, I've glanced at the document that you provided uh where all staff. Members are listed without uh with as opposed to providing in the ranking order. So I have not had a chance to.
Sure.
Formulate the language part precisely, but I will be, I will attempt to do that before we meet next. And so I can't answer that question yet because I don't haven't had a chance to study your your document.
And we had to do a number of calculations, it took a little bit of time, so sorry to all of you that it got to you a little bit late. There's approximately one hundred and twelve non-represented employees. That's about uh that that comprised of approximately sixty that are in the pool part-time. Forty uh that are not at the director level and deputy city manager level. And twelve that comprise department heads and the two deputies. That's kind of the stratifications that that I provided in the memo. And you know if it just depends on where. You know, where 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 council would. Like additional information with respect to any drawing of the line. My for the record, my strong recommendation is to not deviate from the proposal. That um that is contained in the current FY. Twenty-six budget and all my rationale is also included in. At least the important rationale in my mind is included in that memorandum. We have it, if I can summarize just for a moment.
I this is exactly why I was hoping that we would have adequate time to have discussions, but I I.
Well, councilmember Landman, I appreciate your concern, we received an an entire memo on this issue. Ideally, I know that there's been a lot of questions that were brought up. Um behind the scenes, staff have provided numerous opportunities. For um council members to meet with them to discuss their proposed reconciliation items. Again, I there's been a lot of work done to help educate um council members, not only as it relates to things that have been done. Um but also to provide technical expertise as it relates to recommendations regarding any. Um amendments that people want to propose.
Perhaps you someone could clarify for me when when this memo was, was it today, was it yesterday, was it last week?
I'm sorry?
The memo that we are referring.
Just before your meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Like I said, it took a while.
It is, I see it.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 fully fully expected it would not necessarily need to be digested for tonight.
Right.
Did wanna provide that information, once we had it, there was a lot of calculations that went into it. Because it's not just salary, it's also the proportionate uh fringe benefit component. And so we also wanted to be as accurate as we could be for you all, so I I won't elaborate anymore on it. It's just that ultimately, we would need, as staff, would need to know if this is. You know, should this continue to be a discussion, a point of discussion. Where you know where council would like to make the distinctions in order to deliberate on this question.
Question of order, would it be um allowable, given the hour? The item is on the list, uh perhaps uh by Friday? The person proposing it would have time to, that's a question. Um would to fit to to answer the the question of which subset of city staff would be included in that. There would be time for them.
Correct, as was as has been discussed numerous times. Um until we vote, council members have the ability to adjust. Any of their proposals um before we vote. So there's time for for you to do the necessary work in order to finalize your proposal before we get to the vote. Next week, so it again, this is, this is, has been communicated multiple times. Are there?
Mayor, I had, as you recommended, detailed discussion with the city manager about this. Uh when I had my meeting with him, he offered to provide this information, we got it just before this council meeting convened. And so I have no problem with reviewing that information in a timely fashion. And coming back with the revised recommendation, which takes into consideration that advice. But I just don't feel that it is appropriate to go into the details of the city manager's strong recommendation. When I haven't even had an opportunity to reformulate the proposal and you wanted to get it done in forty-five minutes. And this is why I think it's difficult to do.
Again, it's on the list, you have an opportunity to to talk with other members of council and city staff. And to adjust your proposal before the vote. Are there any other items that people would like to add to the reconciliation list for consideration? Councilmember Schlegel.
I'm happy to add some items, um uh when I spoke in my council comments night, you could see that I'm. I'm really trying hard to find fair um adjustments. So please take everything that I'm proposing in that vein. I don't see Reverend Gail Fisher Stewart, oh Reverend Gail Fisher Stewart is still here, no, okay. Um I I want to emphasize my, the first thing I wanna suggest is a, well, first, before that. Uh could we disentangle uh the the councilmember Wesleks? Proposal last week to wait, it was a wait-and-see proposal for the red light camera fund. To wait and after a six-month point. See if there if if that fund of one hundred ten thousand could be replenished. That that's a different proposal and as things go forward, we might need to, you know, vote on both of those things.
Council councilmember Weslek?
Yes.
Um do you have, are you still committed to your proposal to? Um do a mid-year review to determine whether or not there is additional monies available for the community of life grant? Or are you of in support of councilmember Schlegel's um recommendation to add one hundred and ten. Um thousand dollars to the budget um for the grant program?
Uh I am in support of of councilmember Schlegel's um reconciliation item. I worry though if it gets voted down, if I could then have a vote on on my kind of idea, but um. So I understand uh the idea of decoupling the two um.
Okay, nope, that works, um that that mean, so councilmember Weslek, your proposal is actually something that would be. Um discussed as part of um language for the for the resolution. Um so I think it's 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 it doesn't necessarily um immediately impact the the tax rate. So we could just kind of put it to the side and um right now, we could go ahead and just. Have councilmember Wesleks tied uh as another supporter of the increase of the one hundred and ten thousand.
Mayor, might I add just a a quick staff uh perspective here too? In terms of organizing the program, uh it is staff's preference to know at this stage. Uh while we are um in the process of uh receiving applications and identifying funding. That the program amount be known as opposed to what we understand to be the proposal, which is to. At some point later, uh should revenues prove more significant, that we would add to the. Already identified awardees. Both the planning that the grantees would do and planning that staff would do in order to award. For the very specific uh um uh programmatic uh effort of the grantee. Um may be complicated by adding additional money, we we don't know necessarily that it can support additional money. Um and so of the two ideas, knowing now what the additional money would be is 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 the strong preference.
Thank you very much. And so I think that I think that we're in agreement cuz I think councilmember Weslek and councilmember Schlegel are are in favor of adding one hundred and ten thousand. To the budget um for that purpose. So.
Yes.
And I think, you know, we can cross the bridge of the resolution if we have to get there.
I have, I have a question of of numbers, um so.
Can we let councilmember, is it related to this?
Yes, but but maybe, maybe you were just about to say this.
Go, go ahead.
So this is for food insecurity and community grants and emergency rental and mortgage assistance?
This is for community quality of life, which now includes uh food insecurity. Emergency rental assistance is a separate program.
Okay, um councilmember Weslek, were you thinking to propose an increase in food and mortgage security?
That yes, that that's what was discussed last week, um that there were two separate proposals, one for food insecurity. One for community of life, um one was at fifty thousand, the other was at sixty thousand. Because the council voted on the resolution combining the programs, it was one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Councilmember Schlegel proposed increasing the budget to double that amount of what's budgeted, so there would be a total of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um and so what is right here is a one hundred and ten thousand dollar budget amendment. That councilmember Weslek and councilmember Schlegel are in support of.
But that does not include mortgage.
No, that does not include.
Does it include rental?
No, um rental grant is uh the that is a different item. HCD is um has here on line twenty-six an increase in emergency rental assistance.
Where is that?
And that one thirty-six uh was an amount that was intended to be included, it's not currently in the proposed budget. This one thirty-six would allow us to continue that program for the coming fiscal year, so there's currently no money in the budget.
Thank you, that's where I, that's where I got the one thirty-six in my head, okay, thank you for explaining that.
Okay, councilmember Schlegel, your reconciliation items.
Try to move this along, um let's see. Uh I'm so I'm I'm proposing things because we're in a hurry, we had one less week, so I'm putting. Several things on the table, so it opens up some possibilities for us to to discuss at the next session, I hope everybody understands that. I would like to propose. A reconciliation item of reducing one FTE. Using an existing vacancy, not currently advertised and not currently in the search or hiring process.
I just wanna clarify, are you proposing a hiring freeze or you're proposing to cut an FTE?
Freeze, freeze one FTE. Freeze, freeze one FTE. But I want to make sure that it's not impacting a process that has already begun.
Okay, so that would be, just so that we can move, move this along, let's note this as hiring freeze for one FTE. Councilmember Schlegel, are you going to leave that up to city management to identify a position that meets the criteria that you were just discussing?
Yes.
Okay, so city management would need to work with councilmember Schlegel to provide him with what that FTE would be and what the potential costs would be.
Okay. We would provide that to the full council.
Correct.
Second one I'd like to add is to remove the, the financial review, the financial consultant review. Briefly, the argument, just for us to consider on that, is that we, we now have two senior experienced deputies. The ARPA duties for the second deputy are declining. And it's just a very tight year, so. I will-
I'm so sorry. Councilmember Schlegel, do you have the dollar amount for that one?
I believe it was sixty-five thousand. I will propose, in tandem with that, moving sixty-five thousand out of the general fund in, in, moving sixty-five thousand into, no, never, no, never mind. Nevermind, I'm confused. Okay, hold on. Okay, my next one is, I had been about to propose this last week. I, I want to propose it now that for right-of-way rental revenue, in, in the interest of equity for other businesses that don't have access to city sidewalks or street, a rental fee increase, I don't know what the amount would be, but if staff could work out a way to generate ten thousand more in revenue from that.
And so with that, may I ask-
Councilmember DeBala?
So my question, similar to the utility fee would be, and what, what is, not now, what is the current total rental fee? And the number of folks that pay, businesses that pay it? And then what would it look like if you increased it ten thousand dollars? So that, we don't need to do that now. But that's what I would like to know. Thank you.
Mr. Wally, if you could change that to cafe permit, please.
Cafe permit.
Cafe permits.
Okay. I have, I'm not sure how this is done in the accounting, but I have two ERR spending reduction proposals. And can they be tied to reduced contributions to the ERR at the same time?
You would, you would have to propose a reduced contribution in order to affect the general fund. If it's just the reduction from the ERR, then it wouldn't show up in the general fund expenditures.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I don't have this in front of me, but what is the proposed contribution to the ERR this year?
One point one million.
Thank you, Mr. Wally.
One point one million, thank you. All right, so I would propose, I would propose reducing the contribution to the ERR by two hundred twenty-two thousand. Reducing the contribution to the ERR by two hundred twenty-two thousand. And then to tie to that, postpone the leaf vacuum purchase. And management may wish to provide information on the state of that leaf vacuum. And then to delay the purchase of two patrol cars, which are, so the leaf vacuum is seventy thousand and the two patrol cars are seventy-six thousand each.
So I just want to make sure everybody understands, delays of purchases are, will not impact the tax rate. The ERR is basically like a savings account that we create in order to contribute towards the, the future expiration. So postponing purchases will not impact the ERR. And I think that's what, will not impact the tax rate or the general fund. I think that's what Deputy City Manager Eubanks was saying. If you are proposing to reduce our contribution-
That's what I initially proposed.
Right. But, but then the postponing the purchase of the items, it, it, it doesn't play a, a role in the tax rate, is what I'm saying. Because those monies are going to basically be coming from the ERR, it, it doesn't impact the tax rate. So, yeah.
What monies are you, are tax revenue monies used to make the contribution to the ERR?
And then the money, and then the money that is already saved in the reserve for the ERR is what's used to purchase the items. So the only way, it's basically like you have a savings account for, to buy a future car. If you don't buy the car, but you're still saving money towards the purchase of the car, it doesn't impact your savings rate. Now, if you decide to not save any money at all, I'm not going to put five hundred dollars, then if I need to buy a new car, I don't have enough money in my account, I can't buy it.
Okay.
But that would then just mean, when the time comes for the council to make the decision about whether or not to purchase these items, we would have to look at what our funds are available in our ERR. And then the council at the time would have to vote to say-
Oh, I see. Because we would, we're not voting on, we're not saying, go out and buy these cars right now. They would come up as agenda items. Okay, so my job is even simpler here. I'm proposing a reduced contribution of two hundred twenty-two thousand. And just, just to like, get you thinking about that, we are doing a leasing study, which I support. And so it could be that coming out of a leasing study, maybe it's those pieces of equipment, maybe it's something else. Maybe it turns out that our future equipment's spending and budget can be reduced because the leasing study tells us, hey, you know, we can get this stuff cheap. Okay? So, so I guess the two twenty-two is, it, it's, it's a number now. It, it was derived because I thought I had to add up certain vehicle numbers, but, I mean, I suppose that's a management decision anyway, so.
Yeah.
Okay. My last two items are two versions of, of addressing what many residents were talking about. And we've been talking a lot about the atrium project. And I'll preface this very briefly by saying that I very much appreciated the presentations last week and all of the comments that people have made, as well as councilmember Gilbert's personal comments about children and his own experiences in that department. So there was nothing I had ever said that was saying that I wanted to see a project that didn't serve the, the fundamental needs that are identified. The dispatchers, the sound separation, the availability of an interview room, same thing. The, the ADA restroom. I am aware that there's strong concern among some in the community that the mental health counselor space should be separated from the police. And I, I would like the council to have time to discuss that in, in the coming months. So I also, I am, I have heard several creative proposals for accomplishing this differently. So I'm going to make a couple of proposals. And if somebody else can think of something else, that'd be great. One, one basic proposal would be to say, to reduce the atrium budget by four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Calling for value engineering to meet those essential needs. And my, my rationale for that would be that we want to honor what previous councils had approved, which was one point two million. And that additional monies very unfortunately happened because of delays and increased expenses and also two hundred eighty-five in unforeseen expenses that the previous council had not been told about. So that could be registered. And then when you're ready, I'll do another one. Eight, are you ready? Okay. The other one would be to move all of the funds for the atrium project for the time being into the unassigned reserve to buy time to examine how, how some cost savings and value engineering could be done on that. So that, just as there are now some established pots of money for things like possible shortfalls and red light camera fund, this would also be an earmarked pot of money in, in the, in the, in the unassigned reserve for now. This would not be trying to say, let's not do what we need to do. Absolutely not. It would be saying, we've heard from a lot of people saying, what is the most creative, what is the most creative way you can really meet these needs? Is there any way to do it, saving a little bit of money? That's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to disrespect any of our, of our police department or our residents who use that space. So, and I, I, I respect, I totally respect you if you disagree with me on this, but I'm asking you to consider opening up some space for us to be creative here.
Excuse me, just for clarification sake alone, this would be, we were, we were going to go to bid this spring. So this would be a delay of that, delay of the project in order to do value engineering, or have I misunderstood? It's a ninety, it's an FY二十五 project.
We have to decide in, in the next few weeks-
Yeah.
-whether we're allocating funds or not. And I'm saying, you know, maybe, maybe more information can be had fairly soon. But in the meantime-
It wouldn't be very fairly soon if we're talking about value engineering.
Well, that's what I'm asking for, yeah.
That, that would be a considerable delay. I'm just, those are just facts.
Fully understand. Councilmember DeBala?
I have an additional question, which is, would there be a cost associated with the value engineering?
Yes.
And what might that be roughly? I, I think I have one more question about this. So I was under the impression that staff had looked at some of the ideas that have been floated recently, the specific ideas about, we heard some of them during comments today, about just move the wall forward and, and close off the couch on the third floor. So is, is it true that staff has looked at some of these smaller, lesser alternatives? And are they actually physically possible to do? Not saying that there aren't other creative ideas out there, but are the ones that are being kicked around right now, physically possible?
We have, we have not evaluated any smaller scope of a project than the currently proposed project, which is a reduction from a larger project. Nor have we evaluated a fit out of any third floor spaces to accommodate any aspect of the atrium project or the folks that would be housed in that space.
I believe in my conversation with Director Braithwaite about this, she indicated that at earlier stages, there had been some of these studies done and that she was going to look into who might have them.
There were some third floor studies done some time ago for a different purpose, but Director Braithwaite, if you could elaborate?
Yeah. And again, I know for the time, we may want to put this discussion on to a different time because I know everyone's fatigued. The, the concept of putting something on the third floor lobby, front lobby, has a number of difficulties associated with that. First of all, as you might be aware, the building was designed with that as a fire, smoke exit area. So the structure of the building is designed so that in the event of a fire, doors close and all the air gets exhausted up through the roof with these big fans that are on the side. So you're not allowed to block those off. We can't take them out. We, if we were to take them out, we would have to redesign the building for fire safety code requirements. So anything that you would do in that space could not be a contained space. You couldn't make offices in there with ceilings and doors and walls. All you could have would be cubicles because you need to provide the ability for airflow. You also, you know, with the, with, that space was designed as the lobby that it is. So in order to change the function of that for any type of office space or even cubicle space, you have insufficient lighting, you have insufficient heating, cooling, you have insufficient fire safety. And most importantly, you have insufficient security. You're not able to have a secure environment. A cubicle is not a secure place. It's not a soundproofed place. These, these cubicles would not be able to have ceilings. So there could be some use of that space, but it would really be sort of like a welcome lobby, which we already have, two different lobbies on the third floor. There have been discussions about enclosing those lobbies, making them a little more structured with a, with a window. So anyway, that, that's basically the main issues with that. I want to speak to the, briefly to the value engineering. As the atrium project was in development and design, as, as the chief knows, we went through many years of iterations of space assessment needs and what were the priorities. And the project was culled down to that atrium and dispatch project. The community health aspect was added much later. It was going to be shared office space and things like that. That said, at the time when we developed that scope of work and identified that project, there was a value engineering done and there was construction analysis done in the design development. So that work has already been done. You can't value engineer that project. The project is a standalone project. You can redesign a project. If you don't want to fill in the floor and if you want to, you know, expand the dispatcher place, we could hire the architects to come tell us what it would be to bump out the wall of dispatch into the atrium area. And that would be a new, totally new, brand-new project with new design, new analysis, new development. It might be a much simpler project, so that may be the case. But we couldn't use the plans that we have now and value engineering them into something else because the, that's not the design. The design is based on something very, very different. And I would encourage you to look back, particularly to compare the existing condition to what's proposed. We have a very underutilized, ineffective space in the first floor. And what the plan would be, would be to, has always been to increase the use of that space, make it into a workable space and solve a large number of problems in, in, in that design development. And so I really would encourage you to look at those two, to see what we're, what we're getting at.
It's a two-way street, I understand. And it's partly us as council members getting information and sharing with residents and also hearing from residents. Can I just ask really quickly? If the, if the first level is covered over, how does, how does that affect the smoke exit process?
You still have it for the second floor and the third floor.
But, okay, so there has to be a different situation for the first floor?
Yeah, the first floor has its own venting system.
Okay. Also, just, this is the underlying question, I guess. Was this building value engineered originally? And that's why there's this atrium space? I think, I think everybody needs to understand, like, are, over long range, are we eventually trying to make it a, just a full three-story building without an atrium? I, I, because I, I'd love to know what the big picture is.
Yeah, I, I, even though I was here then, I can't really speak to that- Yeah, I, even though I was here then, I can't really speak to that. There was a ton of value engineering done to the project that was built in 2006 and 2007. Huge amounts of value engineering. Why the building was designed with a three story atrium? I can't really speak to that. I don't know. I think it was thought to be attractive at the time and a way to allow light into the basement. And I'm not sure, having worked in that building and lived with it, it's a real waste of space. And I think that has been our lived experience of those three, three floors of open air. I mean, nice art gallery on the second floor and some, I think we've been very creative in the way we've used it. But I don't know why that was designed the way it was.
Okay. Councilmember Schlegel, do you have other items?
I'm really sorry, we are, I don't want us to divulge into design plans for, like, making suggestions regarding the design for the building. I really would prefer for us to be able to stick to the money.
Yeah.
So if you.
That's where we start.
Yeah, that's where we start.
Yeah. So value, answer the question about value engineering. Councilmember Schlegel, do you have any other items that you want to put forward?
No.
Are there any other colleagues that have items that they would like to put forward during this first round of reconciliation? Councilmember Landman?
All right. I have several items. The first is I would like to excise, I forget what the term is. Reduce the Maple Avenue connectivity project contribution, some of which comes from general funds, by the component, the component that comes from general funds by 50%. So there are $88,000 in the special revenue fund and $22,000 in the general fund that are going into that project. And the reason is because the component of that project that goes from Philadelphia Avenue up to Carroll Avenue, I'm estimating that that's 50% of the project, but I can't really tell you the precise number. But that is a component of the project that does not have support from the community and we would rather keep the money in the general fund, in the unassigned general fund.
Real quick question for Mr. McNally. This project is funded through a grant, correct?
Correct. And as part of the terms of the grant, we have to match a certain percentage. It's not a, we can change the scope of this design project. We are coming towards the end of this design work and will be presenting it. And then there will be a discussion about, you know, construction and that sort of thing. But for the purposes of the grant, we have to abide by matching the percentage that we are getting from the state.
Well.
Councilmember DeValle?
Question of clarity? So if, so are you saying that if we reduce the general fund part, we have to give up part of the grant part? Or are you saying that we can't reduce the match fund because we're already contracted? So that's my question.
It's both. It's, it's that we have signed a grant agreement that obligates us to match.
A full amount.
A percentage of the amount we spend on the project. And we have also signed an agree, a contract with a consultant who is doing this design work.
So.
Well, may I, if I may, this is, we're at the design stage at this point, I think we're at the 80%. But we aren't, have not gotten to the construction phase yet.
Correct.
And I'm proposing either that we use the grant money for construction later, if we can do that, or that we use the portion of the grant money and match it with the required percentage, which must be, it's 80/20, I guess, since it's 88K and 22K. But that we, I would rather give back a portion of the grant than conduct a project that does not meet the community's needs and that actually will still cost us some money if we do it. So it's partly about the money and it's partly about the project.
The project is pretty much designed.
It is, it is all designed.
And now we have an obligation to pay the contractor, correct?
So if it were, if it were just the part about, so I get, I get the money part, but if it were just the part about if, let's just say I wanted to not do the upper, whichever part of Maple Avenue.
Uphill part, we'll call it, since I don't know what north, south, east or west it is.
Then, then the time to do that would be when the design is presented and say that part does.
But we don't have construction funds, correct?
Yeah.
So that would be, that would be something that would need to be discussed with the council in terms of future construction of the work. So right now, what we're talking about is matching funds for a grant that we've already received and practically spent. And if we were to not hold the match, then we would be out of compliance with the grant. And it, it doesn't allow us to just change our minds and say, hey, no, instead, we're going to, you know, do construction. That, that's not how grants work. So, but again, you know, if, if councilmember Landman wants to propose the reduction of the, the match, you're, that's your prerogative to do. I would highly vote against that because I do not want us to be in a place where we are out of compliance with grant dollars that we're receiving.
I am not proposing to put us in jail or do anything illegal. I'm trying to figure out how it is that we not throw good money after bad if people have already, already said repeatedly during the design process from my word, many of them are not happy with the design and do not want it to go forward. So if we finish the design and spend another, almost, what is it, 100, 4,000, help it with the math, $100,000 more or less for a design that is not going to be something that I would want to support construction funds for five minutes from now, tell me how that would, how that would play out. But I'm trying to not continue down the road of a process that doesn't have community support.
So the answer is, is that this, this grant was, we, we applied for this grant, we got sign off from council to go after this grant with a specific scope of work. And as part of that grant agreement, we have engaged a contractor to do a design. The design will be presented to this council later this year. And at that point, the project, in terms of the design work, will be finished. The choice to go after additional dollars to construct would offer a point at which we can decide the scope of that construction work. But in terms of this grant agreement, the scope is both set and also legally agreed to by the city. So we're obligated to at least meet the terms of the contract that we have with the state.
All right. So in other words, there is no construction money in this fiscal '26 budget for this project?
Correct.
And this is all design money already obligated? Okay.
Correct.
Well, in that case, as Emily Littella would say, never mind. Somebody remembers Emily Littella. All right. I would like to remove $85,000 from the project for the study of the rent and housing ordinance review and put that money into the unassigned reserve instead. And the reason for that is that this council has not finished finalizing our priorities around this topic and haven't yet had a chance to hear the proposal for this study and determine whether the proposal meets our needs and requirements. If and when we have that discussion, which we haven't yet had, and determine that we should in fact be having the study done, then we can dip into the unassigned reserve and put money into that contract. But I am not convinced at this time that that contract is the direction that, that we want to go. So I'd like to take it out of the contract, whatever contractual category it's in and put it into the unassigned reserve. So that's two different steps, I guess.
Counsel, when you remove an item from the budget, it, the only place that it goes is unassigned reserve. So unless, I believe, Councilmember Schlegel, you, you wanted a designated reserve for the 1.2.
Yeah.
Councilmember Landman, by removing it, it, it would go to unassigned reserve.
Okay. Well, so I am, I'm prepared to designate it for the potential utilization. If the, if the proposal comes back and fully encompasses the housing ordinance review in a way that is consistent with whatever we comes out of our discussion as a council about our priorities when it comes to this topic, then we can, we can revisit it. But I don't want to have it in there now. If you're marked for, ready for spending.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. I do just want to remind my colleagues that we will be discussing the council priorities on April the 30th. And we will also be discussing having a work session on the rent stabilization policy review scope of work. As staff has explained numerous times, the scope of work for that project will be determined in consultation with the council. So that will happen on May the 21st. Additionally, we will have a presentation by an external expert on rent stabilization in the DC, Maryland, Virginia region. And that is also happening on May the 21st. Councilmember Landman, do you have another item?
I would like to take $37,000 for the electric motorcycle purchase off of the list. 37,000, I believe it is.
Could you remind me, is that an ERR item?
I can, I can clarify.
I believe it is.
It's red light camera.
Okay.
And it's to support the traffic unit to do more covert traffic enforcement, allows for an added dimension of traffic enforcement to enhance our productivity in promoting safety in the field. But it is red light camera, so it's special revenue fund, not general.
Manager Dispirito, it was my understanding from conversations with, with Chief DeValle that this was kind of an experiment or a pilot to see what use could be made of that vehicle. So is it possible that such a vehicle could be leased rather than purchased if it is basically working with it to see how it goes?
For clarification, this is not a pilot program. We're going to be utilizing this, as the city manager said, for traffic enforcement. That's what it's going to be utilized for. We looked at leasing, that is not the best option. Purchasing under these circumstances is the best option. It's electric motorcycle. It will be primarily used for traffic control for our traffic unit.
Thank you.
And I just, I always forget this, so you all forgive me. Speed camera funds have to go towards towards public safety related items. Red light camera can go for other purposes. Just to make sure I'm clear.
Correct. So there, there are three different automated enforcement programs we're going to have next fiscal year. Speed camera, which is designated for public safety expenditures only. The red light camera funds can be used for any general fund purposes. We also been approved for a pilot program for stop sign automation that is designed and carved out for public safety only as well. So the only one of those three funds that can be used for general fund expenditures is the red light camera fund.
And I just want to, I'm looking at the reconciliation list and I see that we have the Public Works Facility Design Project is listed here under the special. Oh, never mind, because we got grants. Got it. Got it. Nope, it's late. Okay. Next item?
I think that's it.
Is that it? Okay.
I, I'm not sure if these are items, but could I? Yeah.
Sorry, I wrote this down. I know it's late, so I'll go quick. So we heard earlier this evening from a resident, I believe it was Tom Gugliardo, and he, he pointed out that a full needs assessment was done for Public Works in 2009. I remember at that time reading that closely and, and I, and I, when I reopened it and I looked at it again, it was basically everything that Director Braithwaite had, had showed us on the tour. And it was pretty comprehensive. So is there any way to kind of put a tab in on that 263,000 for the design work and say, but please don't, what's the word? Don't redo work already done, you know, build upon the existing work? Because I would love for some of that grant money to not be redundant, to go back to, say, some, some other municipality in the, in the state that really needs it, you know?
When the Public Works project was first getting renovated, which was in 2009, when we started the process, the, the construction actually happened in 2011. And through that process, we did a scope of work. We identified the whole list of improvements that needed to be made to the building and then council set a funding amount. We were told we could do a $3 million project. So the architect had that information and reduced our scope of work to $3 million. So we know all the things that got chopped off the list of our needs assessment. And that's what we presented to with the Legislative Bond Initiative, that same list that's always been in place since that first needs assessment done. It's the mechanic shop, it's the right of way section, it's the bathrooms, it's the heating and cooling. All those things weren't done then and were, have always been known as second phase. It's been phase one and phase two.
So none, none of this 263 would be spent on a new scope of work?
No, it would just be bringing to design development, construction, you know, preparing construction documents to then be able to go out to bid on the project.
Yeah. Daryl, to clarify, so the work that's been done back then on phase two was not bid ready construction.
No.
No, it wasn't drawings.
This is not like something we can dust off and just update a little bit.
Understand.
No, it was not designed at all.
I understand the fair question asked by the resident. But no, it's, it was more of a conceptual.
Yeah.
Plus regulations have changed greatly in the 15 years plus and so forth.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It, it didn't go beyond a list of the scope of work, scope of needs and conceptually, you know, what would have to happen.
Thank you. I understand that's grant money, but I still think from a point of fairness to other state residents, like, just to use it wisely. My, my other thing was.
We have no other intention.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. You got me there, yeah. So the other thing was that Manager Dispirito, when we had a conversation on Monday, and I was asking about the unassigned reserve and what the, what might happen, like, if it turned out that things were rosier than, than they might possibly be? And if we're getting through the year and the unassigned reserve is still well over 17%, I had asked what your, what your plans would be for that. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what would be your intentions with that as we look towards FY27?
Well, it wouldn't be to spend, depending more.
Save it. The goal is to save it.
Yes. It's, yeah, I'm happy to say on the record, it, it doesn't mean it's Christmas morning. It means that we saved the money. I think FY27 is going to be a difficult year. And, you know, we, you know, we'll, we'll have really moved beyond ARPA assistance by then, for sure, as well as had additional inflationary impact. And we'll be into new labor agreements with the unions and a lot of other commitments. Oh, and the comping class study, among other things. So to your point, yes, I, I believe that having that large reserve right now is proven as a cushion. And if we're fortunate enough to not have to use any measure of it, I think that would want that, I would recommend to council that, that money remain as part of the carryover balance in FY27 to continue to, to work for us as a protection to the community and our services that we provide.
Thank you. I appreciate you going on the record with that and. Thank you. I appreciate you going on the record with that. And I, I won't be putting my hand in the cookie jar. And, and I'll just go on record saying, an option for what to do in FY '27 would to be consider reducing the property tax rate.
And in full transparency, you know, if we find that we're in a place, like for me this year, it's about store, because you don't know what's going to happen. And hopefully we get through a federal fiscal, a budget, we have a better idea of where the state is in the case they need to have a special session of some sorts. And then the next budget season, we have a healthy reserve that we're in a little bit of a better place to be able to say, we see where people are, we may be able to adjust. I, I can't promise that, but that's my hope for the approach that I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about in terms of the budget. That if the sky doesn't fall out.
Yeah, it's, it's hitting us, but maybe it'll, yeah.
If it doesn't, then we'll be in a, in a better place during the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So with that, we have one last item to vote on, and that is Monday's meeting. Okay. Our Councilmember DeValle.
Oh, I was just going to ask if, if we could get a copy of this, even though it's rough, Mark draft, this week and knowing that there's still some numbers that aren't filled out. But I, I don't know that I trust my notes given the hour. Thank you.
Is Friday, is Friday good enough?
Thank you. Vote on Monday night.
Can we have discussion?
Right.
Could we have discussion?
Sure.
So this, this is one of the, the deepest and trickiest parts of my teaching year. And just as a teacher, I have my obligations to my students. I, I want to be able to have those conversations with you all. These are really important matters. I want to be able to listen and hear and exchange ideas. It, it's hard for me to make it happen outside of here. So I would beg your indulgence and, and be willing to come in on Monday just so we can have our conversations together. It builds our, our trust as a team. It's also more transparent to everybody. So that's my two cents.
Councilor Malvick? I, I appreciate that. I, I have to admit to you that I am very at peace with this year's discussions of what's on the table. And I'm just hoping that we don't have to meet on Monday night, really backed up. It's my reality.
Glad to hear you. Question. So the agenda for Monday night would be?
So it sounds, I, I just want to confirm, has everyone put their reconciliation items forward?
I, I have put my reconciliation items forward, but having a day or two to think about the whole mix that we have right now, I can't say that it wouldn't occur to me to say, well, how about this, folks, you know?
So in, in terms of what I am hoping we will do during the, the, the votes is really go through and finalize the actual votes on the items, keeping in mind that some votes may impact other votes, right? So like for right, right now, we have two items on the table in terms of reducing the ATRM budget versus moving ATRM funds to the reserve, right? So depending on how we, how we vote, it will impact ultimately where, where we, where we land. So unless there are folks that have a bunch of additional items that they have not had an opportunity to put on the table, which would be the purpose of, of, of Monday, I'm not sure if what we would be doing on Monday would simply be going through and discussing the items that are already here versus being able, and maybe taking hand votes versus being able to, to vote on, on Wednesday.
Question.
Councilmember DeValle?
A couple of these are, are, are still information. They're not completely clear to me. Is there some other way besides coming in Monday night to, to get, for example, lower, lower the ATRM by 485,000? So what is that? All, put it all into an assigned reserve? Does, is that literally all or is that all but the, the grant? Those are, I guess those are staff specifics that need to get back to us?
Mm-hmm.
Rather than discussion items for us? What do you, you proposing, what are you thinking?
Well, I mean, this is my first time doing this. It seems incredibly complex and it seems like giving ourselves a little more time just to talk, even if it turns out to be a short meeting, would be, would be great. And maybe we have a little more information from the staff. And we, and then we, it allows for a little more give and take with constituents too, just to say, you know.
I, I will say usually during our Monday budget work sessions, we, we may not have public comments.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, so between now, let's say we could do Monday. Between now and Monday, I might hear from some people or I might be able to say, so do you want this or that? Or another council member brought this forward, what do you think? And then having, having the ability to not go straight to hand votes, we did lose a week, you know, because of the power outage. So being able to make up that, that meeting would, would mean a lot to me.
Make a counter proposal?
Can I ask a point of order type question?
Yes.
Okay. So Mayor Searcy, you just mentioned that if we'd met on Monday, there wouldn't be public comments. Are there any other items that are typically on a Wednesday night agenda that would not, would there be anything besides work session on the agenda?
Yep. It would just be budget work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it would be on Wednesday, but for, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about Monday. Councilmember Westlake was asking about what the agenda would be for Monday. The Monday agenda would just be budget reconciliation. We wouldn't have any other items.
Additional question?
Councilmember DeValle?
Councilwoman Westlake, were you finished? Sorry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So four people haven't been through this before. So when you say we will vote on Wednesday, I know the answer, but can you tell us, are we just voting or are we, somebody proposes and then we discuss it and then we vote? Then we move to the next one. Somebody proposes it, we discuss and then we vote?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, so.
The second one.
Yes. Councilmember Hanzak?
Yeah. What I wanted to suggest was in order to allow for that type of discussion, which I think is very important, Councilmember Schlegel, I wonder if we could start at 6:30 on Wednesday rather than adding a full extra evening. And that would allow for a full and holistic conversation and, and perhaps keep us from having to stay quite so late. I, I can tell you that last year, excuse me, two years ago on my first year, I think that was the year we stayed here till 2:00 AM on that particular evening, just because, because it's, it's actually quite valuable, I thought, to do it all like that process in the one night where you're kind of comparing apples and, and other apples, you know, with one another and then go, wait a second, we didn't vote on that one. So maybe I want this one. I, I, I mean, it's, it's a tough call. It's a tough call.
Madam Mayor, our council meetings, including the ones in which we've been discussing budget, have also included a lot of front loaded activities so that we didn't get to budget discussions until much time had already passed. So I would like to offer a friendly amendment to Councilmember Hanzak's suggestion that we, if it's possible for those who have to get here from their places of work elsewhere, and I, I don't know if that's, that might affect, that we start early on Wednesday and that we dispense with all other items.
I will say the April 23rd meeting includes the Piney Branch Elementary School feasibility study. And that would ultimately, not having that happen could ultimately delay their ability to engage with the community regarding the renovation, feasibility study for the renovation of the school. We can try to follow up with them to see if they may be available earlier. I think what we have on the table right now is a, let's first deal with a Monday night meeting. All of those in favor of meeting on Monday to discuss budget reconciliation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So we have, how many? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. So we will keep Wednesday's agenda the same. We will have a work session on a Monday, tentatively slated for 7:30. Only agenda item will be budget reconciliation. And we will continue the discussion, 7:30. And we will continue the discussion in terms of reconciliation items. All right. Any other points of order? And we will adjust the agenda to have the council compensation work session added to the meeting on Wednesday. All right. Thank you all very much.